Go ahead, Bob.
Call the meeting of the township of our Siphony Troy Hills Planning Board to order. It's Monday, July 22nd, and it's 7:30 PM. Adequate notice of this meeting has been given, and it's being conducted in accordance with NJASA 10:4-6 at SEC of the New Jersey Open Public Meeting Act. Ask everyone to please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Constitution of which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, open the meeting to anyone in the general public that has anything that's not on the agenda for this evening. Seeing no one come forward, I'll close the public portion. Please call roll.
Mr. Perelik.
Here.
Councilman DiPiero.
Here.
Mr. Dinsmore.
Here.
Mr. Frigiri.
Here.
Ms. Hernandez.
Here.
Mr. Mendel.
Here.
Mr. Mealy.
Here.
Mr. Patel.
Yes.
Ms. Vili.
Yes.
Mr. Von Aiken.
Here.
Chairman Keller.
Here.
We also have with us tonight our Board Planner, Ms. Fabate.
Here.
And our Board Engineer, Mr. Canjiano.
Here.
And Mr. Carlson was detained.
Is on his way.
He'll be here in a few minutes. Okay, someone move the resolution?
Mr. Chairman, I move the resolution in application number 19:510 Sylvan Campus Realty LLC, 7 Sylvan Way, 8 Campus Drive.
Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Perelik.
Perelik, seconds, please call a roll.
Mr. Perelik.
Yes.
Mr. Dinsmore.
Yes.
Mr. Frigiri.
Yes.
Ms. Hernandez.
Yes.
Mr. Mealy.
Yes.
Ms. Vili.
Yes.
Chairman Keller.
Yes.
And we have minutes to approve.
Mr. Chairman, I move the minutes of 6:17:19.
Yeah, there's a typo on the, on the agenda, it says 17. Is there a second?
Second.
Mendel, second, please call a roll.
Who is second?
Mendel.
Mendel. Mr. Perelik.
Yes.
Mr. Dinsmore.
Yes.
Mr. Frigiri.
Yes.
Ms. Hernandez.
Yes.
Mr. Mendel.
Yes.
Mr. Mealy.
Yes.
Mr. Patel.
Yes.
Ms. Vili.
Yes.
Chairman Keller.
Yes.
Okay, the first item on the agenda for this evening is application number 18:511. Consulacion Navarro, located at 544 Allentown Road, Block 306, Lot 1, for minor subdivision with C variances. This application was carried from May 6th. The applicant and representation here?
Yes, good evening, Mr. Chairman. Attorney Rosemary Stone Doherty, on behalf of the applicant, Connie Navarro, regarding the property at 544 Allentown Road, known as Block 306, Lot 1, which is in the R4 zone and consists of .25 acres.
You're presenting this as a new application because of the major changes that were made?
Well, our position, and unfortunately I didn't get a chance to talk to your board attorney, was going to be that since we did renotice, we submitted all new plans, we made some, in our opinion, material changes to the plan, given the age and the fact that, unfortunately, who would have been available, who heard this originally in 2018, our position was we were going to start anew this evening, so all board members would be eligible to vote.
Okay, thank you. For the record note, Mr. Carlson's present. Okay.
Okay, so with that being said, am I allowed to sit, Mr. Chairman?
Please do.
Or should I stand? Thank you.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, given that this is being treated as a new application, would you like me to go through the previously granted waivers from last year, or is that necessary?
I think they should be discussed.
I would think so, yeah. Previous, well, all the waivers that are listed, including...
Right, right.
Are any from last time not listed this time?
There's really been no change, given last year, almost exactly a year ago, I think the applicant was before us, and addressed any questions that I had, really through testimony at that time. There were more details requested in terms of site photographs, easements, there was a waiver recommended on location of natural features, because it's previously developed, and there are no natural features indicated. There's no waiver needed on topographic contours, those were provided, the applicant had previously addressed utility service, and that has not changed. Likewise with drainage, fences, walls, and sidewalk, and then landscaping, we expect will be addressed through testimony. And I believe that covers it. In terms of floor plans and elevations, again, testimony will provide that information. So we had previously determined that it was complete, and we concur with that prior finding based on the new information submitted.
Okay, we would still need another motion to vote on the waivers requested.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second, Mealy.
Mealy, seconds, please call a roll.
Mr. Perelik.
Yes.
Councilman DiPiero.
Yes.
Mr. Dinsmore.
Yes.
Mr. Frigiri.
Yes.
Ms. Hernandez.
Yes.
Mr. Mendel.
Yes.
Mr. Mealy.
Yes.
Mr. Patel.
Yes.
Ms. Vili.
Yes.
Mr. Von Aiken.
Yes.
Chairman Keller.
Yes.
Great, thank you very much. I'd like to call our first witness, which is going to be Mr. Frederick Miola. We'd like to call him in a dual capacity, as a professional engineer and as a professional planner. If we can have him sworn in first, please.
Sir, could you raise your hand? Please swear the testimony you're about to give us, the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Would you state and spell your name for the record, please?
Frederick C. Miola, M-E-O-L-A. The address is 28 Whippany Road, Whippany.
Would you provide the board with the benefit of your qualifications and experience, please?
Sure. I'm a licensed professional engineer, land surveyor, planner in the state of New Jersey. I'm also a certified floodplain manager. I've been licensed since approximately 1972. Prior to formation of my own firm, which is now 25 years old, I was a partner in the firm with an O4L associates doing subdivisions of site plans throughout the Morris County area. I was also an adjunct professor at County College of Morris for 12 years, teaching the boundary analysis and the land use planning class at that facility.
And your planning and engineering licenses are still current?
Yes, they are.
Okay, anyone have any questions for Mr. Miola? Walks up.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Miola, can you walk the board through the existing conditions that exist at 544 Allentown Road today? I will, if you do. Tell me the date tomorrow.
Okay, we're looking at a plan dated 7/22/19. It's been updated based on the report from the planner and the engineer.
Has it been resubmitted?
No, it's what we'd like to do, counsel, is there's two significant revisions, the rest are technical minor points. We'd like to mark it as an exhibit for tonight, and we brought review sets to make it easier for the board members to look at, as well as a larger set for your engineer and planner to follow along.
I'm a little concerned that you should have probably been intended prior to tonight's hearing.
And understood, obviously, the review memos came out after we had submitted revised plans. One of those review members is dated the 9th. We had discussions and meetings with our client, who was away, that only occurred today. So for the exhibit purposes, that's why we only had the one plan to address the two changes, so the board could see the difference, but we could certainly testify off the old plans and say what the...
Why don't we mark the new plan A1 and proceed?
Okay, and then I brought smaller ones to make it easier for the board members to follow along.
Let's see what the changes are.
So Fred, there's no changes on the existing conditions. Can you go through what the existing conditions at the site are right now?
Yes.
Presidently... Sorry. Can we get those copies of the revised?
Only this side is permitted. You're close enough to the board, you can see.
So this will be A1?
A1.
Is there an extra one over here?
That's what it is.
Oh, okay. We're just going to hand it to the neighbor, that's all. No.
Excuse, just before we proceed, just to clarify what you handed out, this is just a reduced version of the large one that we already have?
No, it's got changes. No, two changes to it, which we'll get to in the revision.
Okay, because we were just trying to compare, and the changes escaped us.
Right. The existing is the same.
Yeah, I'll highlight the major changes.
Okay.
So Fred, please walk us through the existing conditions on the site today.
Yep. Presently, there's an existing, there's an existing structure at the northern end of the site. Behind that is a accessory structure, a shed, and there's a parking area on the, did I say northerly end? I apologize.
Yeah.
Southerly end. Southerly end of the site, and the parking that's on the northerly end closer to Allentown Road. That's what's out there today. And what's being proposed is to subdivide the property into two lots. Lot 1.01, which is the one that has the existing structure, will be 5,632 square feet, and lot 1.02 will be 5,246 square feet. If you look to the right of the existing conditions, there's proposed conditions drawing. In discussions with the client, we've agreed to take off a appendage that was on the northerly side of the existing structure to try to reduce coverage issues, and we agreed to remove the shed in the rear.
Which is one of the material changes on the exhibit, is that that shed has now been eliminated.
So what happens then is that our building coverage on this lot gets down to 23.9%. At one point in time, it was, I think, 26 and change, if I remember correctly. The existing, the proposed home is shown, and that was changed based on a confusion of the architectural plans that were originally submitted. The client had picked a different plan out, and the wrong one got submitted. They have now picked a different house plan out. There's also going to be a change from what was, if you're comparing it to the original plan that you have. The planner correctly pointed out that we had agreed to keep 7.8 foot as an offset for the neighbor, and we agreed to do that. So we put a little more of a jog in the northeast corner of that home, so that we can comply with the 7.8 that we did say at the last meeting we were going to provide to them.
And counsel, that was the second change. So those are really the significant changes to what the board already had and what the exhibit shows.
In my view, those aren't substantial enough to warrant this.
Thank you.
Just for point of clarification, have the correct architectural plans been submitted? Are they what was previously submitted?
No, they're what's in the board's packet now.
What the board has is the one that doesn't show that extra draw. Basically, we're going to take a foot and a half out of the kitchen area.
I mean, in terms of the architectural drawings?
We have to get a hold of the architect. And then he'll change the architecture.
Fred, no, I think your question was, and you correct me if I'm wrong, is when you just gave your testimony, you talked about an error in the architecturals. That was back last year, when we had an architectural plan submitted that incorrectly showed a third floor living space.
Yes.
These plans that were submitted to the board are correct.
Okay.
As far as height, no third floor living, number of bedrooms, is what Fred's talking about, is because we agreed to hold the 7.8, there's a jog on those architectural plans, a small little piece that would have to be pushed in, but it would comply.
That jog is not represented on these drawings, though.
I didn't hear you, I'm sorry, Mr. Keller.
No. The jog is not represented on the drawings. The drawing shows a one-foot offset on both sides of the bump out. What we're going to do is hold the one foot on the side that we have the room, and make a two-and-a-half foot offset on the other side. So the kitchen area will go from 12 to 10 foot six inches, which is more than adequate.
It is represented in the conceptual drawing.
Yes, it's represented in the conceptual drawings. I have forgot, I'll be honest, I had forgotten all about it until I read the planner's report, and then they said, oh, I screwed up.
Do you have architecturals that perhaps you could show us, and we're having some trouble just...
Yeah, there's, yeah.
Yeah, because I still see it says 6.8 feet on what you just submitted tonight.
You want to pass them out?
Well, these are the ones they already have in their board member packet.
Okay, yeah, the board should have gotten these in their packet. These are the ones that were submitted by the architect when we originally submitted the drawings back.
Yeah.
And if you look on, if you look on the floor layout, see on both sides of the dinette area, there's a one-foot jog. We're going to bring this in, so that we can make the 7.8 foot that we had promised to make.
I mean, that sounds fine, I'm just looking at the actual plan, and it still says 6.8.
Yes.
So that will be changed, then?
Yes, yeah, we got to get a hold of the architect to change it.
Chair, Mr. Miola, this, your suggestion probably should be seven, what's the setback you're proposing?
We proposed, we committed to the neighbor that we were going to hold 7.8 feet on that corner.
I see you have here either six foot six or six foot eight.
Right, it was 6.8, and that's the one-foot jog. That's why I said that kitchen is going to be shrunk to make the 7.8 work.
Okay, so this revised plan needs to be revised again, is what you're...
Right, it'll be revised with the architect's plan. We have to get a hold of him to change the plan in that corner.
You say 7.8 feet, do you mean seven feet eight inches, or literally seven?
No, 7.8 feet. 7.8 feet equates to seven foot nine and a half inches.
Okay, Fred, so explain to the board what is proposed with the minor subdivision.
Yeah, what's being proposed is to subdivide the property into lots, as I said, lot 1.01 would be 5,632 square feet, and lot 1.02, the lot that will have the new home on it, would be 5,246 square feet. The existing home will have a lot coverage variance needed, because it exceeds the 20%. The new home will comply with that 20% requirement.
What's the square footage on the old lot, sir?
The square footage on the old lot was 5,632 square feet. Part of, it came out of the original testimony was, if you remember, we originally had the driveway on the northerly, southerly side of the property. With taking that appendage off, we now have room to put the driveway on the northerly side, and that driveway is 12-foot wide, it can accommodate two vehicles, stacked one behind the other.
So Fred, just to be clear, though, one of the concerns was the driveway that was existing on the site would not be able to accommodate two vehicles, and was right up against the property line, correct?
Correct.
And for the neighbor that was adjacent, that was a concern, an issue, so the driveway was flipped over to the site it is now, correct?
Yes, it's further away from the neighbor, who is concerned.
And the applicant is actually removing part of the appendage and sidewalk over there to accommodate and add the improvement for the driveway.
Oh, I'm sorry, if you're proposing to split the lot, though, you're still creating a driveway adjacent to your neighbor.
Correct.
It's just you happen to own both lots.
Correct.
Yes.
So when you sell one of the properties, which can occur at some point, there's only one driveway currently shared between the two that you own, but at the later date, that second lot will not have a driveway?
No, there's two separate driveways. There's one driveway servicing the existing home, and then to the, just to the north of that, we show a 12-foot wide driveway going in right alongside the new home. So each lot would have its own driveway to accommodate two vehicles.
We'd have any need for any shared driveway easements, we didn't want to go down that road, as I'm sure the board's more than familiar, especially when snow removal, things of that nature, we don't want to create a shared driveway. So there are two separate distinct driveways, and part of the testimony you'll hear Mr. Miola talk about is landscaping improvements to help buffer those driveways and give privacy. Correct, Fred?
Yes. Four feet, a little over four feet, four and a half feet.
So the driveway on the, to serve the existing house, looks like it's right on the property line, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, that was as far as we could move it, because of the existing home that's there, that caused more of a challenge.
So is that a new driveway?
Yeah, that's going to be a new driveway.
That's going to be a design waiver, then?
That needs a five-foot variance.
Is it a variance or a waiver?
It will be.
Either way.
Five foot, yeah.
Yeah.
Driveways have to be five foot from the setup.
Yeah, the, I had gotten it, I had gotten into the home to see what we were dealing with inside, to see what suggestions I could make for them. And the front of the home looks like it was the original home. All the mechanical is on the southerly side of that, the furnace, the hot water heater, the electric panel, everything is on that side. And then there's a room to the north of that, you know, taking that appendage off, the room still is usable. If you take much more off of that, then it's really a bowling alley.
If I may, Mr. Chair. That strikes me as a variance, as opposed to a waiver. Do you have any thoughts on that?
Well, when I read the memo, and Fred and I actually discussed this, because in the memo, it made it sound like it would just be a waiver.
I always defer to our worthy attorney on that.
Right.
And the zoning officer.
And if it is a variance, I mean, I have no problem with it being a variance, we can still present the proofs. We added the additional language in the notice to provide for any other relief, as long as counsel is satisfied with that.
Well, I think we should probably proceed, as though that's a variance. I don't have the PRC code in front of me, so...
I have it, it's a five-foot variance, it's in the parking lot, I can pull it up if you want, it's five foot.
Five feet, and the question for me is whether or not this is a structure or not, whether a driveway is a structure under our ordinance or not.
I can pull it if you want me to.
Section 430-275?
L, yeah. 430-275L.
And X, I think X also discusses the setups all the time.
Right, right.
But it does look like they're both a minimum of 12 feet?
Yes.
Is that correct?
Correct, Fred, both driveways are the 12 feet in width.
What is the length of the two driveways, of each driveway?
Okay, the driveway that's on lot 1.01 with the existing home presently is 38 feet to the property line, the driveway that's on lot 1.02, where proposed home is, is 42 feet to the property line.
So Fred, is it your opinion the length of both driveways would easily accommodate two vehicles?
Yes.
It said 38 and 42, is that correct?
Yes.
32 is the existing dwelling driveway?
38 is the existing dwelling driveway.
And the new home doesn't have a garage, right?
No.
Scott, do you want my...
I'm mad, you know, interesting.
275L, and Jen also thinks maybe X. I can pull it up right now.
Should we?
I think I got a later, thank you.
Take a moment, we've got a member who's just...
Who stepped off?
Who just stepped off the...
Oh. Jake? Yeah. He's a physician. I know, but should we take a moment and...
Yeah, let's just pause for a few moments, one of our members, he's a physician.
Understood.
Okay.
That's how you should be, Scott, so your clients can get you 24/7.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. So just to be clear, counsel, your reading is those would be variances requested for the less than five feet from the property line for the driveway location?
That's correct.
Right, okay, so then that would be one for each lot, a mirror image variance.
Right.
Right, okay. So Fred, just kind of picking up where we were, you were going through what's being proposed on the minor subdivision, so again, kind of recap, I'm not sure, when we lost a member, Patel, just recap it quickly, Fred?
Yeah. Recap the variances.
The plan, and then we'll go through the variances.
Okay.
Could you use the microphone, please?
Fred, use the microphone.
Lot 1.01, which is the lot with the existing home, will have a driveway that's on the property line, because we only have 12 feet to the home, even with taking that appendage off, and that driveway will be 38 feet long.
This appendage you keep, is that the portion of the home that's in the roadway right of way?
No, it's, if you look on the existing, they got, we have it crosshatched. There was a bump out in the room, and we're taking that off, so that we can get the driveway in. It also reduces the house. The lot 1.02, that home, and I apologize, for some reason, I thought it was a four-foot minimum side yard, we can make that comply, because I have room to slide the driveway closer to the home, so I don't need that variance.
Okay, so then it wouldn't be a mirror image variance, we would only need it to block 1.01?
Yeah, we only need it on lot 1.01, lot 1.02 can have a five-foot's offset from the driveway.
But you have to relocate the driveway on the planes.
Yeah, I'd have to move it a foot closer to the home, which I can, because I have two feet in there, you look at the chimney, it's two feet.
Well, that's good, we always like to take the variance off. Okay, and then, again, just highlight, because the new proposed lot would be now the corner lot, correct, Fred?
Correct.
Do we need any setback variances?
No, we comply with all of the setbacks on the proposed lot 1.02. The only variance is the lot area.
And then you already indicated you spoke to our client, and stipulated that your exhibit shows moving the house over back to the original 7.8 setback.
Yes, yes, we're going to offset the jog further.
But wouldn't that push the house in the front corner into the 25?
No, we're taking it out of the kitchen, Jennifer. The kitchen is 12-point-something feet presently on the plan, it'll end up 10 and a half feet.
So the overall footprint of the house is getting, has to get smaller?
It's going to be slightly smaller, it'll be, it'll be about 12 square foot smaller.
Because you're taking it off of just that.
The kitchen, just that, the little bump out.
So what you're proposing on lot 1.202, except for the square footage of the lot, everything else is in compliance?
Everything else is in compliance.
Okay, backyard, side yard?
I'm just looking on the architectural plans, and in that area that we're talking about, where the kitchen is, there's a cantilevered bay window, if I'm reading them correctly. But that is not, since it's cantilevered, it's not the foundation of the house, I guess it doesn't count as an encroachment into the side yard.
No, that's, and that isn't changing, that cantilever is staying that way.
I'm just curious how much it sticks out from the house?
It's a foot.
We determined several years ago that bay windows, cantilevers are part of the footprint of the house.
Okay. Is that accounted for in the...
That was counted for in the square footage.
In the 7.8 feet?
It will be, yes.
They've just said they're going to meet the requirements.
Okay.
Regardless of what it shows here, when they go for the building permit, everything will fit within the building envelope.
Correct, for the new lot 1.02, you're absolutely correct, Mr. Dinsmore, the house that we are proposing, the footprint, the setbacks, coverage will be completely compliant, it'll just be the deficiency on the lot size. Correct, Fred?
Yes.
Okay, so Fred, I just want to highlight the professionals' review letters, okay?
Sure.
The first one was from the board engineer, dated July 2nd, 2019, okay? I just want to go through the engineer's comments and recommendations that are listed on page... to go through the engineer's comments and recommendations that are listed on page two, starting with number one, going through number 11, and then we'll get to page three, which is one through three, okay? So Fred, the first comment was, the engineer said there were no spot grades, and additional spot grades should be provided to evaluate the existing and proposed drainage pattern.
On sheet two, we added additional spot elevations on the driveways and on the common property line between the proposed home and the existing home.
Sorry, Mr. Mio, what is that document that you're not showing us?
It's, it's page two of what's loan is A1.
Okay.
A1 is two pages. Unless you want this marked separate.
They described this two, one and two of two.
Okay, so Fred, can you highlight what the existing drainage patterns are now, what's being proposed?
Yeah, please. And does the existing downspouts, are they directed toward the new lot, or is any?
Okay. Problem we have with the existing downspouts, we went out and located them, and we have them marked on the plan with these. I think that's on the first page. Right, if you look on the first page, we show the downspouts. They all go into the ground, nobody knows where they go. All I can tell you is that they're working, because there's no water, there's no erosion around them.
And that actually goes into one of my other comments, I don't know which one it is, is to show the existing utility services for the existing dwelling, really to be sure that there's no cross.
Cross, yep.
You're not crossing onto the new lot, and you need.
Yeah, we've gotten everything. I can tell you that the gas and the electric all come in on the southerly side of the existing home, right out to the street. The water line, we could not find. We've contacted the water company. They're going to have somebody mark it for me. As soon as they mark it, then I'll get it measured for us and where it is. If it's crossing the lot, then obviously we're going to have to relocate it.
Well, yeah, that's, I would suggest that be a condition of approval. Should the water line or sanitary line be crossing the new proposed lot, that those two existing services be relocated, not to cross and cumber the other new lot.
Absolutely.
Yes, the applicant can stipulate to that as a condition of approval if it goes to that point. Okay, so Fred, can you just continue your testimony as to what the existing and proposed drainage patterns are now? So what you just testified, which was the engineer's number seven regarding the utilities, and then?
Yeah, the, the drainage pattern, I'm, I'm back on sheet two. The rear yard area looks like it's coming alongside the southerly side of the property, looking at the elevations that are there. The area between the two drivers will be graded out. The two, the two driveways will have a minimum of an eight tenths of a percent grade out to the street. And then the proposed home, which is on lot 1.02, will be sitting on a little bit of a knoll, and that water will be all directed towards Allentown Road and towards Delanco. So that one's easier, it's easier to handle it when you're doing the grading from the beginning than trying to work around what's on the site. That's always a problem. And I did calculate the building height. Make sure they put it on the plan. Yes, in the, in the first page, right under the word proposed condition, they calculated the building height from the average grade, and the height of the proposed building will be 32.4 feet. So it complies with the ordinance.
And the, and the existing dwelling on lot 101, per your calculations, is currently 33.5, correct Fred?
Correct. Yeah, that one's a little bit more unusual, because the front portion is one story, then there's a two-story addition that looks like it was put up later. So we're taking it to the highest point.
So Fred, number two, I just want to be clear for the record, that full architectural plans, including all corner elevations, rear elevations, would be submitted and revised to match your plans if the matter were to be approved, correct?
Yes, the full architectural plans would be submitted, and we provided elevations at the corners of the, of the proposed home.
Yeah, thank you.
Item three, you just testified to, and that was the driveway slope, correct Fred?
Correct.
Okay. Number four, a copy of the property survey. I honestly don't know where it went, because I thought.
It was submitted originally, and I, and I gave Mr. Kenji, I know, a copy of it this evening.
And if you like counsel, I guess we could mark it as A2, and I could give a copy to Nora, just the original property survey.
Sure.
So it's clear for the record. So we'll just call it A2.
I do have a question on the survey, though, just technical. Yeah, the front, the, the existing front of the building is noted at being 2.5 feet, two and a half feet, over the, into the right of way, and the plans indicate 2.1 feet. Which is, which is which?
2.1 is what we've measured. I, I don't trust anybody, so we always rerun it ourselves. We found about 12 irons, got a good fit out of them, and that's the number we came up with.
And you certify that that's, that's the, but, and now you're, you didn't do the survey, though?
No, I mean, I can generate a survey, the board would like, based on the field evidence. But, you know, we had to do the topo anyway, so my guys tied everything in, and we got the whole neighborhood tied together.
And it's an existing non-conformer that's going to remain, in any event?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, the problem is, we looked at that, and I had a long talk with my client, as I said, if you heard me earlier on, that's where the mechanical equipment is. So it's not as easy as on the other side, where we're just taking it off and putting up a wall. On that side, we have a hot water heater and a furnace and everything, all that's going to have to be relocated to get that, that little two-foot jog, you know?
Okay, so Fred, comment number five was requesting a proposed landscaping plan. You spoke to the applicant, and you would be prepared as a condition of approval to greatly enhance. But can you just kind of go through with the board, some of the thoughts you had as far as the landscaping that you would be recommending be proposed?
I would think we could put landscaping in that five-foot area between the two driveways, to buffer the two driveways from each other. We could provide some additional landscaping along the rear and along the side property line on the southerly end, because there's no driveway there anymore. The only comment I'm going to make is, there was a comment, I think, I don't remember, was the planner or the engineer, about landscaping at the corner of Allentown Road and Delanco. The only thing is, whatever we put there is going to have to be low growing, can't get over 30 inches high, because of site visibility at that corner. You know, you don't want anything that's going to be a mature height that's going to block visibility for people.
And Fred, that was also one of the concerns about where the house is being proposed within the building envelope, correct?
Yes.
That, there was, can you just point out to the board where the stop sign is on a?
Yeah, it's, it's unusual. You can see it, Mark. The stop sign is about, I'm going to guess, maybe 40 feet from Allentown Road. So it's, it should be moved up, you know? You don't normally have a stop sign that far back. You stop, and then you have to roll forward for about another 20, 30 feet before you can see.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
At one point, I'm relatively familiar with the neighborhood. Just to clarify, the reason the stop sign is back is because the crosswalk is set back. So the crosswalk itself is actually back from Allentown Road, and so the stop sign accommodates the.
The crosswalk, okay.
The crosswalk, that's why it's like.
Okay.
Yeah, I was, I was asked to look, to speak to the police department on that, and they said because of that, they have, they want you to stop and then crawl forward so that you don't hit any pedestrians.
Okay, makes sense.
There's reasons for, for the stop signs there.
Yeah.
So Fred, just to be clear, though, because of the location of the stop sign, you also took that into consideration when plotting the placement of the proposed new dwelling, correct?
Well, yes, we did. It's, it's placed back in conformance with the required setbacks, which clears the stop sign and all of, all the obstructions that could be in front of it.
Right, so we won't have an issue where they're stopped at the stop sign, and they can't see because of the dwelling, because the dwelling is behind that point of the stop.
That is correct.
Next, item six, construction details. We would certainly provide those as a condition of approval if approved. Number seven, Fred, was, you talked about already, the water service is the utility that you were unable to verify when it existed.
Right, that's the only one we haven't been able to find. The other ones we found on the existing home, and they were all on, in the front of the house, along Delanco. I believe we found the sewer connection, it's on the left side in the front. We found a cleanout. And the gas is on the right side, and the electric comes in from the right side, I believe. The only thing we couldn't find was the water, and we contacted the water company, and they're going to mark it for us, and then we'll go out and get it all located.
Well, the plans should be, if you can get the water company to locate it for you, and you've located the sewer, the plan should be updated.
We'll update it to show all that.
And just to be clear, though, for the record, if there is any issue, the water line would have to then be relocated, because we're not proposing any easements for water lines, correct?
No, anything that's crossing the property line would be relocated to be within the lot.
Okay, number eight, you talked about the existing dwelling's downspouts. Number nine, Fred, it's your understanding that the applicant's intention would be, if it was approved, to be able to file by deed, correct?
Correct.
Number 10, he's looking for the limits of the driveway drop curb, and should provide the curb tie-in elevation.
Yeah, we, we show both the existing drop curb. That's on sheet one. It's basically across the entire front of that gravel driveway area.
We'll check it.
And we're showing the two proposed drop curbs to be put in. So we'll, we'll put full face curb in the.
Full face curb, spot elevation, top and bottom curb.
Yeah, yeah.
And then Fred, on number 11, the proposed dwelling stormwater management plant system should consider connecting directly to the street storm inlet.
Yes, we have no problem with that. Assuming the project gets approval, we'll come in with a grading plan for that new home, and we'll accommodate that.
Okay, and then page three, Fred, I won't make you go through all three of them, but you can stipulate that for the record on page three, items one, two, and three, if the board were to vote favorably on it, the applicant could comply with, correct?
Yes, we will.
So Fred, you also had an opportunity to review the board's planners' memo dated July 9th, 2019, correct?
Yes.
I didn't hear a whole lot on the proposed landscaping, Fred. Maybe we cut you off. You had mentioned something about some landscaping between the driveways, but in talking to the applicant, what were kind of some of the proposed rules that you were talking about to enhance landscaping on the new and the existing side?
We were talking about providing landscaping in the front of the proposed home. Obviously, landscaping between the two driveways. On the existing home, because of the proximity of that existing home to the right of way line, we're at more of a constraint. The only thing we do is some landscaping on the southerly end, and some landscaping along that southerly property line to buffer it from the neighbor.
And then in that vein as well, Fred, you were going to propose some landscaping on what's technically our side yard of 7.8, correct Fred?
Yes, we could provide, we could probably provide a row of arbivides, because you want something that's going to stay narrow when it grows. You don't want anything that's going to get too bushy, because 7.8, well, it sounds like a lot, isn't a lot, you know? So we can provide some landscaping along that property line for the neighbor. We also provide two, three trees on the property.
And then you already talked about the driveways and the access to the property. The driveway that's being proposed for the new lot 1.02, your testimony was you can offset that, so we don't need a variance for the distance to the adjacent property line.
Right, that is correct.
Just, just to refresh on the length of the driveways, you had that the new home's driveway would be 42 feet, and the new driveway to serve the existing home would be 38 feet. Those are measured from the property line and not the actual street?
Those are measured from the property line, not from the street.
Okay.
Okay, you addressed already her concern about, originally we were at 6.4 feet, but we corrected that back to 7.8 feet, correct?
Right, that's going to be 7.8. She's absolutely correct. I forgot about it. And I should point out, on sheet two, we do show a proposed drywall in the front, right near that drain. So that's where we're anticipating putting it in, and the roof leaders are all connected to.
And you also testified to.
And there's a grate right in front, perfect tie-in.
And again, just to be clear, you did measure the existing structure's height, since.
Correct.
And that was at the 33 and a half, correct Fred?
Yes.
And the proposed architectural would be showing for the new house, a height of, what was your testimony?
I got 32.4. Based on the dimension that the architect shows on his plan, he shows 17 feet to the beginning of the eve for the roof, and he shows a 10-on-12 roof pitch. Taking that over to 31.4, it added another 13 feet. So it gave us 30 feet, plus the average grade around the house from the finished floor.
Just a couple of comments as a non-architect, but I, in my experience, I believe this is a hip roof. Even though they're shorter, they can create more of a visual impact, because you're looking at a broader face. So I would suggest, if the architect can do anything to break that up a bit, that would be helpful. Then the other thing is that there are no side or rear elevations provided. The way I read the plans, I could be wrong, but it looks to me like there are no windows, I'm sorry, there's only one window on one side of the house, on the first floor. That would be the northern side, I believe. And on the southern side, there are no windows on the first floor.
Yes.
It gets a little bit better on the second story.
On the southerly side, you're absolutely right, there are no windows.
I would suggest he could look at ways to avoid.
On the rear, to me, it looks like he's provided a slider with a little platform out.
Yeah.
So you got the window and the slider.
Correct. Rear looks okay, it's, particularly the northern side.
Okay.
Really just got the one small, it's a bathroom window.
Yeah, I'll talk to him. I don't see why, there's any reason why we can't provide some additional windows. You know, I say that, but I got yelled at by an architect.
It's not always easy.
It's not always easy, because of the new state energy code, windows have a different problem, you know, than they used to. So sometimes they got to cut down to meet the energy code. But, you know, we'll, we'll do as much as we can to make it work.
So Fred, so can you now recap the variances that are associated with this minor subdivision plan?
Yeah, the variances associated with it are lot area for both lots. Do you want the exact numbers, or just?
Why don't you state them again, just so it's clear, Fred?
Yeah, on lot 1.01, the minimum lot area is supposed to be 6,000 square feet, and we're 5,632 square feet. We have a lot width at the road of 61 feet, but at the setback line, it's slightly less than that. Looking for the number. I think it's in the ballpark of about 56, yeah, 56.19. And then on lot, and then we have this variance for the driveway on lot 1.01, for the existing home, being on the property line, we're supposed to be five feet off. And I believe that's all the variances on that lot. On proposed lot 1.02, with the one with the proposed home, we have a lot area variance of 5,246 square feet, where we need 6,000. And everything else is in compliance.
Mr. Mio, I believe you also require a variance for lot coverage on the existing lot.
Yes, I apologize, thank you.
So I think I count five variances.
Yeah, we, we brought it down, we got it down to 23.9 from the original 26.8 or 27. something. But it was getting harder and harder to figure out what else we could shave off.
So Fred, can you offer up some of your proofs now, in your capacity as both an engineer and as a planner, as to if the benefits outweigh the detriments in regards to what you're, I'm assuming asserting based off my numerous conversations with you, would be C2 variance for being requested?
Yes, it's a C2 variance that we're requesting. Okay, I have tax maps that I've highlighted, showing the lots and the surrounding area that are deficient in lot area and lot width.
The A3. C2, yeah. Thank you.
Rosemarie, do we mark this?
A3, yes, sir. of the tax map for all of the property owners within 200 feet on the official list from the council, correct?
Yes. This is a composite of the tax maps. As stipulated, I never get the job in the middle of the tax map sheets. So we had to take three sheets and tape them together to get you the picture of all the lots within 200 feet.
Okay, so you have some lots highlighted on this map?
Yes.
Can you go through with the board and explain to them what the highlighted is?
The lots highlighted in yellow are lots that are deficient in lot area. And I can give you, I'll give you the list. I'm going to run down it in a minute. The only one thing I'm going to point out, I apologize, Lot 13 should also be highlighted yellow. That's a 40-foot lot. I originally thought 14.01 was part of 13 when I looked it up on the tax records. 14.01 and 14 are owned by the same person. So Lot 13 is a 40-foot lot. So that's an additional undersized lot. Walking you around the neighborhood. We'll start with Block 306. The lot directly to our east is Lot 2. That lot has a lot area of 5,290 square feet. It does have a lot width of 62 feet and 60 foot at the 40-foot setback. Then Lot 5 is a 5,000-square-foot lot. That's 50 by 100, so that's deficient on both lot width and lot area. And as I said, Lot 13 is the lot that I missed when I colored it. Apologize. And that's a 40-by-100-foot lot, so that's a 4,000-square-foot lot with a 40-foot lot width. Then if we go across the street to Block 308, we have three lots directly across from us that are all deficient in lot area. Lot 3, 4, and 5 are all 60-foot lots, but their depths do not even reach 100. I'll give you the areas on them as I calculate them. 3.08 Lot 3 is 4,920 square feet. Block 3.08 Lot 4 is 5,040 square feet. And then Block 3.08 Lot 5 is 5,610 square feet. And before somebody asks me, there is one other one that I discounted because I said it's a de minimis variance. I wasn't going to say it. Lot 6 is deficient by a half a foot in depth, which means that it's 30 square foot under the minimum lot size. It doesn't meet the 6,000, it's 5,970 square feet. I didn't highlight that because I thought that was so close that you'd just let it go. And then behind us on Centurion, Block 3.08 Lot 11 is a 40-foot lot. So that's a 4,000-square-foot lot with a 40-foot lot width.
The house is all the way at the back.
And then as we go over to Block 254, right on Delanco Drive, we have a Lot 9, which is 40 by 100, which is 4,000 square feet. And then Lot 3 gets caught, just gets caught within the 200 feet. It's the same thing. That's a 40-by-100-foot lot. So there's two more 4,000-square-foot lots in the area.
So in the 200-foot list qualification of the neighborhood on notice, you have quite a few lots that are under on square footage and you have a few that are also under on lot width, correct, Fred?
Yes. Four of them are deficient on lot width and lot area. The rest of them are deficient on lot area.
Right. Now, what about large lots left in the neighborhood? Is there any other lot, in your opinion, as an engineer and a planner, that would really even be able to be eligible to be further subdivided if the board was worried about how many large lots are left in the neighborhood?
The only one that's possible is across the street from us, and that one, I think, is going to be difficult. It's only 115 feet along the road and it's approximately 90-some-odd feet deep. So it's going to be probably closer to the 5,000-square-foot number.
How about Numbers 1 and 12? They meet the 5,000. If you haven't met 100 by 100, they'd be 50 by 100.
Yes. I mean, those could be subdivided into 50 by 100 if the board chose to-
Which would meet.
No, it wouldn't meet. We're 60 for a month.
It wouldn't meet. Meet 60 and you need 6,000 square feet. So there are a few of them that, you know, they could apply for a variance and it's going to stand on its own, you know?
But overall lot area, they're smaller in size than our client.
We're the largest lot left in the neighborhood.
And they don't have the width to be able to come close to that 60, correct?
Right.
Mr. Miola, Lot 13, which you indicated should be highlighted, is there a house on that lot?
Yes. Yes, there is.
Is it, am I missing it?
The tax maps are incomplete sometimes. They don't always show additions. They don't always show homes.
I apologize. I had this at the original meeting. I didn't think to make more copies. I do have an aerial photo, so you can see the house.
Okay. I'll probably have that in my file.
So I think this lot fits within the neighborhood. The neighborhood has got a mix of lots, anywhere from 4,000 to, as somebody just pointed out, there's a couple of 10,000-square-foot lots out there. And I think these two lots would be compatible, especially given the shape of this lot. It's a very peculiar-shaped lot. It's an L-shaped lot. It's not a rectangle. And you've got that large appendage on Delanco that's just wide open.
Well, I'm going to give my little speech. Some of these lots predate our master plan.
Mr. DiPiero, can we make sure his testimony is finishable?
Okay. I thought we were done.
No.
Apologize.
Certainly, okay.
Sure.
Fred, I just want to be clear, though. The C2 variances that you're requesting, correct?
Yes. We're asking for a C2.
Right. In your opinion, as both an engineer, but more importantly now with the planning side of it, do you feel that the benefits in approving this application would outweigh any of the detriments to the zone plan?
Yes. I think that the benefits of allowing another home on a smaller lot in this neighborhood would fit in better with the character of the neighborhood than allowing this lot to stay a 11,500-square-foot lot, if I remember the number correctly, with the potential for a much larger addition added on to that home, which could happen. You know? Sometimes it's a question of what looks better in the neighborhood. And there's one home out there that when you drive by, at least in my mind as I drive by, it sticks out like a sore thumb because it's so much bigger than every single other house on the street. You know? And it's a question of fitting in with the character of the neighborhood. And I think this neighborhood is grown up with smaller homes on it. And I think the character of the neighborhood would dictate a smaller home makes more sense at this location.
Thank you, Fred.
That's it for this witness?
Yes.
Okay. Do any board members have any questions for this witness? Questions for this witness? Anyone? Okay, I'll put it to the public for any questions for this witness, not comments. Comments will come a little bit later. Any questions for Mr. Miola, based on his testimony? Okay. Ma'am, Mary?
Okay. At this time, I'd like to call the applicant herself, Ms. DiPiero.
Ma'am, would you raise your right hand for us, please?
Oh. Yes.
Do you swear the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I'm really glad to be here tonight, and I know I missed the last meeting, and I apologize for that because of some circumstances that I can't control. And now I meant to be coming back because I definitely reviewed the first proposal in the minutes of the meeting, and we know we have to do a lot of work. Ever since I came back, you know, I worked with Fred and Rosemarie, and I addressed every single issue. And I also went to the architect to make sure that, you know, we are in complete document, addressing all the questions that you have at the best we could. And we also apologized because I wasn't here, that the wrong house plan was presented to you, and I know, you know, we're going to make up for it. So that was one of the main reasons that we would like to be reconsidered. So we did the best we could. We spent like more, almost six months trying to prepare this, and with the help of Nora, we were able to get a chance to meet with you tonight. And I just want to introduce myself. You know, I've been in this location for almost five years. I have my neighbor there that can post my testament. And I love the neighborhood. I've been living in Por Sipony for maybe 20-some years, and I moved out for five years. And because now I'm almost retiring, you know, I came back because I love the area. I love Por Sipony. And I meant to really make it look good, you know? I bought this house because I want to help my family. They're living with me right now, and they want to build their own place. And I said, okay, we can buy this house, and maybe if we can subdivide, we can build a place of your own. And I want to make sure that the elevation of the house is going to conform to propose and bring the value of my neighborhood. And I love my street, you know? And I hope you will give me a chance, you know, to build a house for my family that will really bring a value to my location.
So Connie, when we spoke last, okay?
Rosemarie, just one moment. We all know who you are, but I forgot to ask you, just for the record, to state and spell your name, please.
Oh, I'm sorry. I am Consolacion Navarro. C-O-N-S-O-L-A-C-I-O-N is my first name, and my last name is Navarro, N-A-V-A-R-R-O.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So Connie, we, as you indicated, you've been working on this really for more than six months, right? Because the last hearing was almost a year ago, a year ago towards the month, okay? But when we met with you and we told you some of the concerns your adjacent property owners and neighbors had, that very much concerns you as well, correct?
Yes. Yes, very much so. Because the driveway was not put in the right spot on the first proposal, and I already caught my eye, and that's why I said, no, that's not how it should be. So we addressed those issues also.
And with the new house plan, yes, the driveways will be parallel to one another, but you're going to be planning on doing some enhanced landscaping between those driveways, correct?
Yes, definitely. Because I want to be in line with my neighbors because they have good landscaping there. So we like pre-proposed to put like lower plants around the corner and then, you know, high plants to be a buffer in between the two houses and in the back where Tony lives. And I was willing to do that, you know, to make it look conform with the neighborhood.
And you completely understand that your architectural plans will have to be shrunk and down more-
Yes.
-to maintain that 7.8 setback for your neighbor that you're referring to as Tony, correct?
Yes. Yes, we will do the best we can. And my architect is very flexible because he lives in the area also. So he said to me that Connie, whatever, you know, the board is going to require, so I'm going to try my best to really make adjustments. So there's no problem with that.
Thank you, Connie.
Thank you very much.
Any members of the board have any questions for Ms. Navarro?
Yes, Ms. Navarro. What do you think the, your, the new lot looks like you're doing a lot to try and bring conformity, but your existing property, or the property that will have the existing home, has a lot of non-conformance? And how do you think that property will hold up for the rest of the neighborhood?
It looks very nice right now because it's not like, look very small. The elevation, I heard a lot of my neighbors when they come by, they like the shape, they like how it looks like. So I hate to change it, you know, because it's been in the neighborhood for such a long time and people like the way it looks.
Now Connie, just to follow up with the board member's questioning, when you bought the house, was it in the same condition it is now?
No, it wasn't. It was really rundown. And because I love Por Sipony, as I said, you know, I can really revise it. I have a really foresight on how to make it look good, you know? And my Realtor and then I think the owner really wants to get rid of it because it is full of termites and it's going down, and they just want to get rid of it. And I said, you know, because I like the location, I spent a lot of money, you know, trying to revive it, you know, get rid of the termites and then build that up and make it look nice. And we spent a great deal of money to make it look this way.
And you are proposing to get rid of the shed, right?
Yes.
To help bring your existing coverage down?
Yes.
You're taking that appendix off the side of your house to provide a better driveway, correct?
Yes. Yes.
And relocate that door so it makes more sense for that front door coming into the home, correct?
Correct. As a matter of fact, that door in the back is already there, but, you know, I think it's because of the driveway, that's why the board was saying, you know, it shouldn't be there. But because now the driveway is in front and we're going to cut the house because the front part that bumps out, it's only closet, you know? In order to comply, you know, I'm willing to cut that to reduce the size and also get rid of this shed in order to conform a little bit, you know, to what you guys would like to see.
And Connie, you understand that where your existing house now, which is proposed Lot 101, has the technical encroaching into the right-of-way.
Yes.
You understand that if any tragedy happens to this house, you're going to have to correct that.
Yes.
But as Mr. Miola testified, you took him on a tour of the inside of your house, correct?
Yes, yes, sir. You know, I was very opposed to that because I think it's been almost $75,000 to put and make it look nice there, bring a new furnace, and all my mechanics are there. So it's really a shame to get, you know, rid of that little corner.
Right. With that little square foot, which is basically 2 by 5-
Right.
...area, didn't have your mechanicals there, you, this would be a whole different discussion for you.
Exactly. Yeah, but it's going to look, take a little bit off of that one, so I'm afraid that it's going to affect the looks. So it's up to the boards to decide.
Thank you, Connie.
Any other members of the board have any questions for Ms. Navarro? Any members of the public have any questions for Ms. Navarro? Seeing no one come forward, close the public portion.
Mrs. Navarro, thank you, Connie. Mrs. Navarro is our last witness. I would just like to reserve the right to do a summary after it's open to the public again for comments and any board member comments.
Any members of the board have any comments on this application?
Just, I do.
Just a second. Mr. DiPiero, you had started before.
A lot of these homes predate our master plan and our 6,000-square-foot requirement. So pointing to all of those that are non-conforming, a lot of them predate any conformance at all that was required. I'm technically opposed to subdividing a conforming lot into two non-conforming lots in principle. However, I've seen in the past, there's a lot of- However, I've seen in the, in the past, there's a lot of hundred-by-hundred lots here, and a lot of them are on old homes that are probably gonna be torn down, and they're gonna wanna subdivide into two 50-by-100 non-conforming lots to build two homes. If that is, if we had a strategy to deny all of those because they produce non-conforming lots, then the ultimatum would be to build a bigger house on that 100-by-100, which is what they call the McMansions, which really would be not conforming with the neighborhood. You can't win. The objective of the 6,000 square feet was not to continue to increase the density of already densely populated neighborhoods. That's its pure, pure purpose. But to be strictly enforcing it, it produces something else, which produces McMansions, which is not conforming really either with the neighborhood. It's kind of a dilemma. One of my, one of my pet peeves, when I'm just listening to all these, pointing out all these non-conforming, you know, say, "Yeah, okay, we know they're there. They're in Lake Eyewatha. They're in Rainbow Lakes. They're in Mount Tabor." Just my observation.
Okay. Heard it?
All right. My comment is actually more of a question for the engineer. I'm not sure if he's still down there. Is he down there? Hi. Yeah, reading back. I live outside the 200-foot radius. I'm a resident on Elmwood Drive, and we've had a history on Allentown of sinkholes forming periodically by the sinkhole, by the catch drains with the runoff. And my question is, does a new structure affect the amount of runoff in the specific area? There haven't been any in the last five or six years, but probably, I don't know, maybe some of the neighbors could, seven, eight years ago, 10 years ago, there was one at the corner of Centerton and Allentown where they had to replace it. And so, my question is, does a new structure increase focus runoff in an area, or is it like, no pun intended, a wash because, because of the fact that it's the same amount of water just?
Well, obviously, when you're switching it from, from, in this case, grass to a portion of it being roof and a portion of it being driveway, you're gonna have an increase in runoff and, in amount of runoff that doesn't get into the ground. They did propose a dry well to take the roof runoff and get that back into the ground. So, they are mitigating that additional increase. And in the big picture, it's under the thresholds that you would require stormwater. So, they are doing, you know, doing the right thing by providing the dry well and sending that water back into the ground to try to mimic what's happening there today.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
Mr. Chairman? Ms. May? A question for our attorney, Scott. If we were to approve this application, are we in effect approving something that exists as a non-conformance, which is that triangular piece that juts out beyond the boundary line? Are we setting a precedent by doing that?
We're not approving that. We have no authority to approve that. It's existing, we acknowledge it, but you're not giving it any, you're not validating.
Okay.
Just be thankful this isn't Mount Tabor.
Yes. Yes. Thank you.
Where literally every house is non-conforming.
Exactly. Any other board members have any comments?
Just one more, if I may.
Sure.
You mentioned, Mr. Miola, that the existing structure, you have the drains that go into the ground, and you don't know where they go.
We couldn't find an outlet for them.
My, my concern is, we have found on occasion that these drains, we don't know where they go, okay? Many times end up in the sewer line and not in the storm drain line. Would it be possible to try to find that, or to feed it into the dry well where you know where it's gonna go as opposed to not knowing where it's going?
Yeah. If the board approves it, I would say make it a condition of approval that we find out where these drains are, and I'll work with the county engineer.
One of the regular practices, and I should have brought that up last time, very good point, Mr. DiPiero. You can video record the driveway. You can get a plumbing company to do a video inspection of where they go and what the conditions are in.
Yes.
So, that should be added as a condition if it is approved. Very good point.
And if it goes to the wrong place, then I have to work with you about mitigating.
Yes, relocating it and rediverting it to, in this case, the street would be fine. That's where the drainage generally goes. But yeah, I think the video inspection of this is a very good idea, and it's very appropriate.
Any other comments from board members?
None.
Okay, I'll open it to the public. Anyone has any comments on this application? Please come forward. State your name and address for the record, and take your comments.
My name's Karen Phelps.
Use, please use the microphone. You can be seated if you'd like.
My name is Karen Phelps. I live at 21 Delanco Drive, down the street from this proposed house. Obviously, it's my personal opinion, but I think it's gonna take away from our neighborhood. Subdividing this lot and making this house is larger than most of the houses on our block. Is the address going to change? Because the existing house is Allentown Road, and then if you divide, the lot is also gonna be, it's a corner lot now, so is that address gonna be Allentown or Delanco? I don't know. The two driveways together, they're gonna go into the driveway across the street to the other lady, like when they're backing out the other neighbor. I think it's gonna take away from our neighborhood. I moved to Parsippany to be in a nice quaint little area, and this is not gonna fit into my neighborhood. That's just my comment.
Do you have a suggestion on the address? What the existing house will continue to be, was it 544?
Well, normally is what happens is, I'm sure counsel can tell you, is if it gets approved, your tax assessor is the one who gives us the new addresses. I would imagine, just from my 20 years, and not Scott, give a little more than me, that it'll probably be an Allentown address because the front of the house, the front door, the elevation is facing, sorry. Yeah, Delanco is what I meant to say, is facing Delanco. It's not facing Allentown. So, I would imagine it would have a Delanco address. I mean, they typically like to go where the front, right?
We don't know that for sure, but that's self-possession right now. Anyone else from the public have any comments?
She makes a point about the driveways.
Okay, seeing no one come forward, I'll close the public portion. I would, through the number of variances on this, I would like to poll the board's thoughts on this before an actual motion is made and a vote taken. So, Nora, if you would just go through the roll, please.
Mr. Paralec.
What are we doing?
This is just expressing your.
Is this a non-binding straw poll?
Non-binding straw poll.
Non-binding straw polling commentary.
Can I interject for one moment here? This is a courtesy that's given to many applicants, for the, this is for our newer members, given to many applicants, so that if there's, if it does not appear that there's a majority of the board that's ready to vote for the, in favor of the application, the applicant has the opportunity to withdraw the application. In the event you vote no, it's denied, then no longer can they reappear with a similar or revised plan. It would have to be substantially revised, so.
Yes.
That's why we do this.
This is, this is to benefit the applicant.
Exactly.
Okay. Mr. Paralec, your thoughts?
Yes, I agree with Ms. Phelps. I think it would be incompatible with the neighborhood. And I also believe that contrary to what Redhead said, Mr. Miola, that it conforms with the benefit, public benefits test. I don't believe it does. I think it's incompatible with the neighborhood.
Councilman DiPiero.
Councilman.
Oh, my goodness, I have a conflict here. Yes and a no. I rarely vote for applications that produce non-conforming lots out of a conforming lot, rarely. But in some of these neighborhoods, rather than produce McMansions, I've given in, so I will say yes.
Mr. Dinsmore.
I think the actual proposed house is not that big. I mean, you're talking about 984 square feet on the first floor. That is not a large house. That is a modest house. It's not a small house, but it's not a large house. I think the fact that you've got close to 1,100 square feet in the lot, cutting it down into two, is, with the odd shaping of the lot, I do think that it makes sense to be allowed to do that, given that so many other lots are similarly sized. So, it does not change the nature of the neighborhood, in my opinion. If the house were much bigger, much taller, if it got to 35 feet or something like that, I would be opposed to it, but I think that the house size is reasonable, the lot size makes sense, the fact that the new lot is gonna have, be in complete compliance, except for the slightly smaller lot size, makes me believe that this is a reasonable thing to do, and I will vote in favor.
Mr. Frigieri.
Well, I also have mixed feelings, and one of the reasons is, and this is just a procedural issue, I've been on the board now for about a year or so, and there's always this issue of height relative to neighborhood height. The fact that there's height relative to what the, whatever our statute or the rules stipulate, that's great, but it could still be that every other home in the area is 10 feet lower, or whatever. We don't know that. That's not provided, and so I find myself, knowing the neighborhood, trying to do the math in my head and squit, and there's, there's a building, a new construction, which predated my time here on the board, that might not have ever come through on the lower end of Elmwood Drive, and the home is easily 10, 12 feet taller than anything near it. And, and so, I'm, that's my concern. It's not your job to provide that. It doesn't seem to be a rule. I like it to be a rule moving forward. So, I, at this point, I would say I'm probably reluctant, yes, just because I think that there has been good faith efforts made by the owner to try and make this work. And, but again, I feel to some extent I'm making a decision without, without relative information, and we're putting together a master plan and.
Did they? You said it was 32.4 feet height?
Yeah. The proposed house, it's proposed to be smaller than the existing.
Is this thing house is 33 and change?
Correct.
So, it's also set back for, you know, quite a bit.
Yeah.
You know, so.
Fair point.
Anyhow, you can, a reluctant yes, a respectful yes, put it that way.
Ms. Hernandez.
Yeah, so I echo a lot of what you're saying. You see that all over Parsippany, smaller home neighborhoods with the new houses juxtaposed right next to them, and they're not necessarily huge, but they just don't fit in. So, I, it is an odd-shaped lot, and I do feel for the neighbors that are around there. I know that it's a little bit smaller than the existing house that's there. That roof, though, it's, it is hard to see what it would look like in person. So, I do feel reluctant to say yes. It does conform with what we're doing. I wish going forward, we could have, make our ordinances such that they, the area and the ratio from the floor and everything will fit with the neighborhood so that.
At least we can see.
Neighbors aren't disappointed.
Ms. Hernandez, if I could just interject just a point.
Interject.
Be mindful that we're, what we're approving tonight is a subdivision of the lot. We're not necessarily, we're not approving a specific structure. So, once we, once we subdivide the lot.
That's true.
Then it then has a buildable area, and they can technically build anything they like that conforms, otherwise conforms with our ordinance in that area. Now, we could make, and I've written, that one condition of this application will be that the new structure will be constructed with the dimensions that have been proposed tonight.
But they don't come back with it.
They don't come back with it, but that's gonna be a condition of approval. Now, but the house that you see on the paper is not necessarily the precise house we're gonna get. Quite frankly, these architectures are all too bare to say that they're approvable. So, you know, we, but there will be a lot in which they can build, and they will build a conforming structure of some sort there.
And counsel, as testified before, because your planner brought up a good comment, one or the other, if the board were to grant favor as a condition of approval, the applicant did stipulate they would be willing to break up the roof line as proposed, whether it be with some dormers or some other style, to help minimize the appearance of the height of the house.
Well, we were actually contemplating an ordinance that, when you had only the 25-foot setback, that the front, the facade of the house could not be more than a certain height, whether, I forgot what it was, like 28 feet or?
I'm still investigating.
Twenty, it was about 28 feet.
28 feet on the front of the house. I mean, you could still have a higher peak, but, but to the, to the gutter could be no more than 28 feet, and that it had to, if it did go higher, it had to be going backwards.
Okay, let's, let's stay on the.
All right, so.
Ms. Hernandez, did it?
Yes.
Is there?
I would.
Reluctant, yes.
Reluctant, yes.
Mr. Mendel.
Yeah, I'm also conflicted, and part of my quandary here is that we've discussed a lot of things that the applicant has said, "Well, we'll take care of that, we'll submit that later," and so on. And I think I'd really like to see a complete package, maybe one or two little items, but here, there's a lot of items here. Exactly what are we gonna do with the landscaping? What are we gonna do with the other things? So, at this point, I think I'd vote no.
Mr. Patel.
Mr. Patel.
Yes.
No, no, you're not voting yes.
Not voting. This is your, your thoughts on the application.
Yeah, please, yes.
I won't say much, but I think so is it doable the way it looks at it, with the surrounding loads?
Ms. Veely.
Me?
Yes.
I have to admit that in, in the many years that I've been on the planning board, I, in a subdivision of non-conforming lots, I'm consistently a no vote. I know as being a zoning officer and working for the town many years, that a non-conforming lot is a nightmare for future buyers, for neighbors, because as soon as you create them, they continue, people don't understand, they buy it, they can't add to it. I think the only years on the planning board that I've ever voted for one was when the variance was so minute that if I drove by, I wouldn't have even been able to see it. This one, the lots, I have to be honest with you, lot size, could any of us drive by and look at a lot and be able to tell that it's that close to 6,000 square foot by the eye? No. So, the new lots, lot size variance is de minimis because by the naked eye, none of us would be able to see that variance. The other variance is the lot, the, the, the front yard is already existing, the building coverage is existing. If we don't approve this today, the building coverage on the existing lot is already over. The shed will stay, the porch will stay. So, I am definitely conflicted. I, if there were less variances, this probably would be one of the ones I would vote yes, but for the fact that there's five variances on the existing lot, I would vote no.
Mr. Von Aken.
So, just for an initial point, the stories that are involved that are being proposed here are limited to two. There's, there's no way that they'd be able to extend that to any kind of livable space in the attic. Is that fair, or is that?
They indicated that the attic would not be habitable, and you'd only get it to it by a pull-down stairs.
Okay.
Probably be a truss roof anyway.
Yeah, those hips are like that, right?
Yeah. Those aren't.
Okay. All right. So, then to my, my feelings about this. And I guess, similar to Ms. Veely, it's not so much the, the proposed 1.02, it's the proposed 1.01. That's my bigger concern. The fact that there are, you've got a lot that has so many variances already existing, and you've done nothing to address those, that lots variances, and it continues to be difficult. I'm sorry, is that wrong?
A little bit. I mean, the shed is gone. Not managed.
Okay.
But, but your main point is still valid.
Okay, fair enough. And that's really where my concerns lie. However, to the point made by others, if you were not to go through this, and you weren't to split the lot, the only alternative would be to demolish the existing property and put up a much larger property. And how would we feel about that larger, McMansion is still other people's words, versus this smaller property with its potential, and sometime in the future, maybe the existing property does get revised in a small capacity. Can't tell that for sure, but, so for that reason, I would probably say yes to this.
Chairman Keller.
I, too, I've made motions for subdivisions where the two lots are de minimis, as far as compliance. From six thousand to fifty-two hundred is, does not seem de minimis to me. The fifty-six hundred, as Ms. Veely said, you could make a case that the naked eye couldn't tell it. The fifty-two hundred, I think, I think does. This is a weird-shaped lot, and part of the reason is, five forty-four and five forty, Allentown, were owned by two brothers, Clem and Ray Kozinski. And they didn't mind being cozy. Dividing the second lot into another lot yet, and putting three lots on that corner, which is a heavily-traveled corner. And I think Ms. Phelps mentioned the traffic there, and backing out of those driveways onto Delanco, could be an issue. Fire trucks quite often take Delanco down to the firehouse when they're returning from calls. That's a heavily-traveled road, Allentown. The sidewalks are heavily traveled by schoolchildren on their way home from both Brook Lawn and the hills, and kids walking to Lake Par School. That concerns me, too. I would ask the board just to be very careful on setting a precedent. As Mr. DiPiero said, a lot of these substandard lots predate our master plan. And the idea of creating a master plan with the sixty-foot lots is to stop that. Like I said, I have voted for, I've made motions, and I voted for many substandard, but they've been de minimis. And I see this as not one of those cases. So I would vote no on this application.
Mr. Mealy.
Mr. Chairman, looking at the report from Keller and Kirkpatrick on page two, I agree with what Mr. Mandell said a moment ago. So many of these things, item four, not satisfied. Item three, not satisfied. Item eight, not satisfied. Item nine, not satisfied. Why are we pushing through an application when some of these things have not been provided? I vote, I would vote no in this case.
I thought that was gonna be discussed with our engineer and resolved.
Yeah, many of this, my comment, many of these have been provided in the plan discussed and provided tonight. The, when we did the review, these items were open, and the plan submitted, they're shown tonight, and this reduced copy addressed the majority of these items, and with those two additional conditions for the utilities to be shown, and the video inspection of the downspouts, generally addressed, I don't go one by one through, but generally addressed my comments on my letter.
So, can I, Mr. Chairman, can I ask a question?
Sure.
So are you saying, then, that eight of the ten have been addressed?
Well, I wanna take a moment to review them. I've seen them, I wanna review them, I wanna make sure. But generally speaking, he's provided more information. He still needs to provide some more information on spot shots for the driveway and the like. Again, the utilities that need to be shown, those are my general concerns, the runoff toward the property, and any kind of utilities that would be, you know, encroachment on the new lot. And I need that to be clarified. That's an important issue.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Would it be profit to table at this point, waiting for all of those changes to be made and come back, and, you know, for us to see exactly what's that, how they're gonna change the roof line to improve the site, and what the plantings will be, and so on?
I'll ask Mr. Carlson to address that.
What was the final tally on the temperature?
I don't know, I wasn't keeping track.
By my, we polled all eleven members of the board, including our two alternates. By my count, I get six-five. Is that what you have as well?
Yes, six-five.
Nora, would you...
But I don't know who you're all for.
Yeah, would you state who's gonna be voting on this?
I'm sorry, I missed what Mr. Patel said.
He was a yes.
He's a yes.
He was a yes, okay. There was a couple that were unsure. I have definite yes, DiPiero, Dinsmore, Fergieri, Hernandez were unsure, reluctant yeses. Mr. Patel was a yes, Von Aiken, yes, no.
I think he was more saying no, right?
He's in my yes column.
He was a what?
He was in my yes column, but we shall see.
Those of you that are unsure, remember, you're making a permanent change in this neighborhood. You can't say next year, I changed my mind. You decide tonight which way you're voting, and that is the change that you could be making in the neighborhood.
Nora, how do you have me?
You're a no, incompatible with the neighborhood.
I think the question was, who were the alternates? Because they, they would not necessarily be a voting vote.
Right.
Right.
Mr. Mandell or Mr. Patel?
Steve, Patel.
They can't say each other out. No, I mean, if...
I'm sorry, who was the other alternate? We had Mr. Patel and...
And Mr. Mandell.
Mr. Mandell.
So I think that's one and one.
One and one, right.
So five-four.
So if I...
By my count, fifteen minutes ago or so, it looks like five-four.
No.
In my...
In favor.
Counsel, as you're aware, I have requested to be able to reserve the summary. But in listening to some of the board members' comments, and some of the board members who just want clarity as to the checklist items, I would recommend at this time, for my client, that we would request the board to carry us to your next available hearing date with no additional notice, so that Mr. Mealy could finish tweaking any additional revisions, and have those plans set in well in ample time, so that your engineers and your planner could review them and update their memorandums, to show the board what's in compliance or what is still outstanding.
It's still nonconforming.
I think that'd be wise.
It's good by me, yes. And meanwhile, too, I'd request, if you haven't yet, any of the board members driven by the site, please do.
Okay.
Between now and...
So, Mr. Chairman, do we go over this again at the next available meeting?
Which would be the second meeting in August, 'cause the first meeting is, we've canceled. If that's, if there's space on that, in general.
No, there's not. September twenty-third would be the next available.
I'm sorry, September twenty-third?
September twenty-third.
Plenty of time to get your...
That gives you plenty of time.
Absolutely.
Mr. Chairman, could I just make a couple points for when they come back on information? I noticed last year, in the water department's review of the application, they had asked for some details to be added, and I don't think that that happened in this round. A landscaping plan would be reviewed by the forestry department. And on the zoning table, I think there's a couple things you could correct. I mentioned on the existing house, you have it as one story, it's actually two, I mean, it's one and two. And I guess I defer to the zoning officer, but I'm not convinced that the existing shed is actually nonconformity. I read in the code, and I don't have the citation right in front of me, that it can actually be under six feet.
Right, but we're removing it anyways to lower the purpose coverage.
But I know a couple members were noting that, you know, this has all these nonconformities. But I actually think the only nonconformity on your current lot is the house in the right of way.
Right.
So it would probably be worth having it corrected on the table.
I agree.
Part of the reason for the way that backyard is laid out is Ray Kozinski was the gardener. Clem didn't want a backyard, he had to take care of it. So Ray had the garden.
The one had a garden, and one just had driveway.
Just one other suggestion, if I may, Nora, I'm sure that Nora would be happy to help you get an audio copy of this meeting. Since there have been so many comments, and little things that we've probably all forgotten by now, you should probably comb through that as you revise the plans.
No problem.
Mr. Chairman, I move we carry this case to September twenty-third.
Is there a second?
Second, Eli.
Call a roll.
Mr. O'Perowick?
Yes.
Councilman DiPiero?
Yes.
Mr. Dinsmore?
Yes.
Mr. Fergieri?
Yes.
Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Mr. Mandell?
Yes.
Mr. Mealy?
Yes.
Mr. Patel?
Yes.
Ms. Veely?
Yes.
Mr. Von Aiken?
Yes.
Chairman Keller.
Yes. And for the members of the public, we will hear this case again on September twenty-third. There will not be any letters sent to you on it. That's what no further notice means. So, September twenty-third, if you mark your calendars, if you wanna come back. Okay, thank you. Okay, five-minute break, and then we'll get on to the redevelopment plan.
All right, it's getting late.
Call a roll, please.
Mr. O'Perowick?
Here.
Councilman DiPiero?
Here.
Mr. Dinsmore?
Here.
Mr. Fergieri?
Here.
Ms. Hernandez?
Here.
Mr. Mandell?
Here.
Mr. Mealy?
Here.
Mr. Patel?
Here.
Chairman Keller?
Here. Okay. Call you.
All right, this is on, right? Okay, thank you, Chairman. Given the latest of the hour, I will try to be brief. Item, the item on our agenda tonight is the consideration of the non-condemnation, condemnation, area in need of redevelopment study, which the township council has directed you to undertake. And you gave that duty to me, thank you. For Landadex Plaza, block three ninety-two, lots one and two. Given that there are several new members of the board, and I think even the ones that aren't new may not have been through this process before, we wanted to spend a little bit of time, I will not be reading this slide word for word, but I wanted to spend some time on the background of redevelopment, give you a sense of the legal context, so you have an understanding of this process and your role in it. So the legal authority here is the local housing, local redevelopment and housing laws, using the LRHL, which gives the power to local governments to designate some areas either in need of content, excuse me, in need of rehabilitation or redevelopment. When it's the case that there are conditions on those properties that have persisted for some time, that there are conditions of deterioration, you know, weaknesses of design, improper facilities, just an overall lack of proper development, which are unlikely to be mitigated through the normal course of development. This is basically the old Blight laws, which predated this ordinance, this statute, and really gave rise to urban renewal. This is the better version of urban renewal, and it really gives municipalities tools to try to enact the type of development that they want on particular properties that have weaknesses. So, once areas are designated as either redevelopment or rehabilitation, areas municipalities may then prepare redevelopment plans, which can either supersede or overlay the existing zoning on the property, and open up the use of financial tools, and perhaps more flexibility on zoning. So, for this particular property, in January, the council directed you, the planning board, to undertake a study of whether this property, lots one and two, meets the statutory requirements to be designated for a non-condemnation area in need of redevelopment. And that's the purpose of this study. So...
Susan, can you just take thirty seconds and explain the difference between rehabilitation and redevelopment?
Sure, they're very similar. Rehabilitation basically is the same criteria to be met. The difference is in the types of the tools that you can use. So the key difference being that redevelopment opens you up to the potential for a pilot, a payment in lieu of taxes, or financing tools, and those are not available for areas in need of rehabilitation. They may or may not be used for a redevelopment area either. It's really the jurisdiction of the governing body. But they cannot be used for areas in need of rehabilitation. So just a quick overview, again, I will not be reading all of these boxes, but this is just a sense of the overall process. The very first item happened in January. Again, the governing body, the township council, directed you to undertake this study. As part of that direction, they had to indicate whether eminent domain was or was not on the table, and it was not on the table. They specifically said non-condemnation, so that's off the table for this study and this site. The planning board has to prepare a map of the study area, and that's part of this report that we're going through tonight. You conduct the investigation, present the findings, have a public hearing, which is tonight, and you make an overall recommendation to the governing body. They may take that recommendation, do nothing with it, they may table it, they may act, they may deny it, or they may make changes. It's really up to them. They take your recommendation as a base, but then they make the course of action that they see appropriate. Number six is really only if condemnation is on the table, that it has to be shown to have a public purpose, and there's provision for objectors. Again, that's not, that's not on the table here tonight. If the area is in fact designated as a redevelopment area, a redevelopment plan is then prepared. Governing body adopts that plan, has an amendment to the zoning ordinance. You have a few redevelopment areas that have been adopted here in town. And then upon completion of that process, then development can occur under the provisions of the redevelopment plan. So what we did in the study, and we have been working at it since about January, early February, did a full land use and zoning review, to get a sense not only of the site itself, but the surrounding area, looked at the overall conditions of the site. I took two site visits there, I went in every building, most floors, many floors of the buildings. So I saw it actually during snow and during spring. I took a look at the history of development approvals on the site, the zoning permits that had been sought and had been obtained, the taxes assessment history. And I also reviewed two reports that were provided by experts retained by the property owner. One was a market study by the Otto Group, which is a pretty well-renowned expert here in New Jersey. And then the other was by their architects. There was a fairly detailed assessment of sort of all the buildings on the site, and then the site itself. And also, obviously, reviewed the master plan, both the one you have in place, and also thinking about the one we're developing now. So here is the map, which you are statutorily required to create. It's essentially what you were directed to do, is these, these are the two lots, which together are part of three ninety-two. So the northern one is block one, that's eight hundred and nine hundred Landadex, two four-story buildings. It's about eleven and a half acres. And then the southern lot is the bigger one, lot two, is just under thirty-four acres, and it's the remainder of the buildings. There are seven total buildings on the property, and a total of four hundred and fifty thousand square feet, I'll just go back. And then they range from two to four stories, and we'll get into some more detail. But they're, they're basically all connected by this internal loop road, which has one means of egress and exit onto Parsippany Road. Just looking at the context in terms of land use, as you can see, the entire site is devoted to office use, that's that purple-pink color. And then Parsippany Road is one of your commercial corridors. We've talked about it, actually, in the master plan process. It's pretty solidly commercial. There are a few isolated residential properties on the road. Directly across the street from the property, you have a small neighborhood that has a few, I think, historic homes, actually. And you have a small park, which doesn't really show up, it's kind of melded into the yellow, but it's governed Livingston Park. And then you have East Lake Elementary School, which you can see in blue, a couple other nonprofit uses, I believe that the Elks Club is down there. And then you have an apartment complex further south on Parsippany Road. When you get to, when you get north of Route eighty, the character changes quite a bit, as you all know. As you get close to forty-six, it becomes, you know, much more large-scale commercial. The zoning here, the site itself is in the research office and laboratory zone, ROL, which interestingly is also across the street for those residential homes and the park. That might be something we want to correct at some point. The rest of the area along Parsippany Road, across the street to the west, is the Office Service District, OS. The remainder is B three, and if you remember correctly, the township just rezoned several of those properties from R three to B three. So it's fairly solidly commercial. The neighborhoods, immediately to the south is an R three neighborhood, that's So, what does the existing zoning allow? Again, it's ROL, uh, pretty solidly office, office of all types, you know, sort of large-scale executive, smaller scale perhaps, professional business, medical, dental, uh, and then pharmaceutical-related uses, whether that's, um, the actual production, um, administration, packaging, labs and warehousing. Um, banks also, probably is because there's a Chase Bank right there. Um, mobile food trucks seem to be allowed everywhere, uh, in your office zones. And then just incidental accessory uses, um, and one key conditional use which is not allowed in most of your office zones, but it is allowed in ROL, is hotels. Um, just to give you the, the area and bulk requirements, I'm not going to read them, but, um, it's fairly large-scale, minimum five acres. There are fairly significant yard requirements, um, and kind of the bottom line is that this property does meet all of these zoning requirements. Yes, there's only one that it seems to not be compliant with, and that is that there's a buffer requirement uh, where you abut a residential zone, and they're, they're a bit short of that. Um, that may be a pre-existing condition, they may have been granted a variance at some point. So, here is, uh, the existing condition on the site where the buildings are. And you'll see there are three main clusters, um, the IBW building which is colored on this, this map, but it's actually not included in the, in the study area. Um, but there are three clusters of buildings, there, there are the two northern ones, 800 and 900, uh, which again are four stories. Uh, then there are the two southern clusters, um, you know, grouped sort of around these fountains, and surface parking is surrounded the whole thing. Uh, 450,000 square feet total, uh, about 1,600 surface parking spaces. So, here, here's a sense of how big the buildings are and, and sort of the height of them. Again, ranging from two to four stories, only 800 and 900 are the four stories, everything else is between two and three. Um, I think the smallest building is about 28,000 square feet, and you go on up to about 66,000. So, these are, uh, they're actually not huge office buildings, and that's one of the things that we'll talk about is the foot, the flip, excuse me, the floor plates are fairly small for office buildings, uh, that you typically see in Parsippany. So, I took a lot more photos than these, but I'm not going to bore for you. Um, these are the ones that are in the report, I thought they were sort of most illustrative of the conditions on the property. Um, and you'll see, uh, the top row is the parking lot conditions, and this was fairly universal throughout the property, throughout the site. Uh, weakness in, in the paving conditions, there's a lot of crumbling, there's a lot of drainage issues, you can see ponding. Uh, that was fairly consistent both times I was there, and I've actually been there multiple times. Um, and you can see the, the photo on the top right, um, you see how high the level of that pavement is relative to the curb. It shows, you can't, you can't keep adding to it, it's like when you, you reach the end of your roofing life and you find that you have to take it all out uh, and redo it. They're, they're at that point with their parking lot, so really the entire site needs to be, uh, remilled, repaved, all the curbing replaced. You can see, um, the bottom left photo, there's very little landscaping within the parking areas. Uh, I think landscaping as a whole, as I'll show you, is in pretty good shape, but not really in the parking lots. Um, what's there seems to have been deteriorated over time. And then signage is really lacking. Um, when you get in there, all the buildings look so similar, it's easy to kind of get turned around. And, um, there is no monument signage for any of the tenants, so they're really limited to the small signs in front of the buildings and the wayfinding signage. And you can see some of them are not in good shape, um, and they're just overall lacking. Uh, landscaping and lighting, I included the top photo at the left because it, you know, the overall impression is it's attractive, it's pretty well-maintained. Um, it's got, you know, a pretty good amount of vegetation. But then when you get closer, you can see that there are some issues, and, you know, some of this falls in the category of deferred maintenance. Um, certainly, there's issues with the paving, pavement, uh, the sidewalks, again, with the curbing. Um, some of the lighting has been replaced fairly recently with LED, but that's really only in some parts of the property. Most of it is, uh, is much older and it doesn't really match. Um, in terms of site amenities, uh, there is one cafeteria for the whole campus, I believe it's in 300, right? 300? Um, and you can see that's the entrance, um, that awning area to the one cafeteria, and then you see the, the interior. Um, it's basically like a little buffet in this seating area. Um, the main amenity that, that the buildings sort of face and, uh, and really relate to are these fountains, there's three of them. Um, and they're attractive overall, but then again, when you, when you kind of look at it a little bit closer, this one, as I understand, on the bottom left, had fairly been recently repainted, but you can see that it's already, uh, showing its wear. Um, same with the chairs, and it, these three bottom photos, I mean, that's basically the extent of the outdoor amenities. It's, it's the fountains and it's some tables and chairs. Uh, looking at the building facades and the windows, um, the top two photos on the, the left in the middle just kind of show you typical buildings here. You have the three-story building on the left, and then 3 and 2 mixture in the middle. Um, basically, they're all characterized by these sort of large windows that are very thin, um, not terribly well-insulated, a little chilly when you're there in the winter, and you can kind of see that bottom left photo just sort of how thin they are and the insulation issues. Uh, maybe difficult to see the other two photos, but you can see there's a, in the middle, the bottom middle, there's a slight change in color, that's because they were actually resealing the facade while I was there, it was apparently leaking, and there was some emergency work happening. Um, so, so the windows and the facades are not in the greatest shape. And this, I think, is probably the most significant issue, uh, facing this property, is the HVAC. What you found here, and it numbers in the hundreds, these heat pumps. Um, the one on the top left is really the sort of typical one, the original one, and you can see on the bottom left, some of the office buildings had covered them, some of them used sort of creative decorative, um, shelves, but they were all there unless they had been removed at great cost. Um, this is essentially how the heating functions here. Um, I believe only one of the buildings, maybe two are gas, two are gas. Um, the rest of the, the campus is all electric, and this is how it's heated. Um, so, that, that's a pretty big stumbling block, I mean, it clearly obviously takes up space, it's not what people are used to, but more than that, it's, it's not an efficient way of heating, and to redo that, uh, basically, I think the number that the architect came up with was about 16 million to replace all of those. Um, bathrooms are also kind of in a mixed bag, you can see the top, the top row have not been updated. Um, the one on the top ref, left is not handicap accessible. Some floors don't have any ADA accessible bathrooms, others do. Um, and you can see some bathrooms have been updated, but many of them really do need a gut renovation, um, when you go and look at them. Uh, the lobbies also are kind of a mixed bag, uh, the one on the top left is fairly, um, typical of, uh, not original lobby, but somewhat dated, uh, in good shape overall, I mean, it's clean and reasonably attractive. Um, but check out the wall that's in the two middle photos. That is a sort of a stone concrete that's original to the buildings. Um, and apparently, at least on the elevator shafts, is actually structural, so it can't be removed. So, basically, you have to cover it up with something, which can be done, but again, it's another, another thing you have to think about. So, you can see that some of the lobbies have been updated, um, others not so much, but they're all in reasonably good condition. Uh, looking at building interiors, they're all sort of organized around this sort of central core, and some of them have been divided up into a lot of, you know, smaller office spaces, and you can see on the top left, that's a fairly typical floor plate where you, you know, you have a lot of individual offices connected by sort of long hallways. Uh, the ones on the bottom have been sort of opened up to show that there's potential for larger floor plates. Um, and I think you can see on the bottom left, there's still heat pumps. On the bottom right, they've been removed, um, so you can kind of see that the perimeter is kind of cleared out. So, some of them are, are completely down to their studs and some of the floors are, uh, a little bit more finished. So, then we also got this information from the property owner on the current building tenancy, current building occupancy as, as of May. Um, and I actually reached out, uh, Martha Soko, and confirmed that this is all still current. So, you can see it really, there's a range here. Um, one building is 100% vacant, 500 Lanedex and has been for some time. Uh, another building is 100% occupied, 700, and the rest kind of fall somewhere in between. I believe the overall campus-wide vacancy rate is about 54 or so percent. But, uh, there is some information that they didn't feel comfortable sharing in public, understandably so, uh, really getting into the sort of nitty-gritty details as to whose leases are up when. Um, but they are expecting some leases will be up the end of the year, and they already know that some of their tenants will be vacating. So, that, that vacancy rate is going to be going up. We also reviewed which, a table which I did not include here, it's in the report, it's a long table. Um, we reviewed 10 years of data from the zoning department, um, of zoning permits, just to try to get a sense of the kind of, uh, tenancy activity. And we chose that period, we wanted to predate or get right around the recession, get a little bit, slightly before the recession and after it. And we also wanted to capture the change in ownership which occurred in 2018. So, until 2018, the two lots had been in separate ownership, uh, for, for many, many, many years. And then the owner, uh, basically combined them or took ownership of both, both lots, uh, in 2018. So, we wanted to capture that period as well. And what we found there is that, um, there really hadn't been a significant and sustained level of activity over that 10-year period. Um, there've been years where there was more and years where there was almost none. Um, there wasn't really any year where there was a lot of activity. Um, and most of it was very small-scale. Um, I believe that only four of the, uh, the zoning permits involved 10,000 square feet or more, and one of those was actually a reduction, a tenant reducing their space. So, you're looking at, you know, 1,000 square feet here, or 2,000 or 3,000 square feet here, uh, really kind of small-scale stuff. And then also, when you look at where the zoning permits and the tenants were going, most of the activity, or about half of the activity, was really devoted to those two buildings, 8 and 900, um, which, which have seen a little bit more upgrades than the other, the other parts of the campus. So, that's just a sense of the overall conditions, site conditions and individual building conditions. And now we get to the criteria, so this is your role, uh, as the Planning Board. You have, and I'll go through them, there's a set of eight criteria by the statute that you have to weigh, um, this property against. And I'll tell you how, which ones I think are relevant and how they're met. But basically, it's, it's a fairly narrow charge that you have, you have to basically just determine, do they or do they not meet the criteria? Um, what's done with that recommendation in terms of potentially designating a redevelopment area is really up to the Council and the future development is, is for a later date. So, it's not really the point of tonight to figure out, should this property be redeveloped and how? It's, do they meet the statutory criteria requirements, um, and what do we want to recommend to the governing body? So, the first one is, um, just looking at the overall, the general, generality of the site. Um, do the buildings show evidence of not being up to standards? Are they unsafe? Are there, are there areas that they're not sanitary, dilapidation, obsolescence, lack of air light and open space? Um, have any of the buildings been abandoned or discontinued and not been used for some period of time? Have they fallen into disrepair and they're not really able to be occupied?
Is that applying to the one that has zero occupancy?
Hmm, one could possibly make the argument, I wouldn't hang your hat on it. Um, because I think what this, what B is more about is where it's been really abandoned, um, and it's sort of falling down. Um, I don't think that's the case here, it's, it's still being kept up, it's just empty. The third one deals with land that's either publicly, publicly owned or is overall vacant, um, and has remained that way for a decade or more and is unlikely to change because there might be something up with the site. Maybe there's contamination, there's some steep slopes, there's some underlying problems, um, that make it not likely to be developed. Um, the last one on this slide is, um, a little bit different, differentiated from the first one. It covers some of the same ground, but this is actually getting into more specific areas or buildings that, um, that in particular show evidence of problems with safety, health, morals and welfare. That's your, you know, your basic charge, uh, for zoning and land use, you want to protect the public health, safety, morals and welfare. That they're having issues with dilapidation, obsolescence, there's faulty design, uh, those kinds of issues. So, A is sort of looking at a site-wide level, and D is sort of looking more at the individual buildings or improvements. The remaining four, um, is that, does the land have issues of ownership, problems with title that are, that are clogging up the works? Has there been a fire, a natural disaster, um, that has basically destroyed all or part of the property and reduced the value? Um, the third one, the third one on this slide only deals with municipalities that have an enterprise zone established, that doesn't include you. And then the last one is probably, I think, the newest criteria. Um, would, would designation as a redevelopment area be furthering smart growth planning principles? So, those are the eight, uh, that you have available to you. Of those, we think that these three are applicable. Um, the first two deal with the overall condition of the site and the buildings. Uh, and then the third one deals with smart, smart growth planning principles. So, I'll go through how they relate. So, I kind of lumped the first two together because one deals with generality and the other deals with more specifics, but they're kind of getting at a lot of the same issues. And I think what's applicable here is obsolescence is the key word. Um, you know, are these office buildings consistent with what you're seeing in other areas of town, the township? What you're seeing with new offices or, or redeveloped offices? Are they likely on their own to be attractive to buyers or tenants? And when we really looked at it, um, you know, uh, there's really an overall lack of amenities here, and that's a key word that we hear a lot here on the Planning Board, so I think you all have a sense of what some of the other office parks in town are doing. Um, and when you really look at it here, there's, there's virtually no dining here, there's the one cafeteria which serves the entire campus, it's very small. There's no fitness, there's no retail, uh, there's not a consistent trail or even connecting sidewalk on the property. So, if anybody wanted to take a walk during lunch, they're essentially walking in the parking lots and the roadways. So, it lacks all those, those amenities, and creating those types of amenities is actually very difficult on this property. Um, for one thing, the way that they're clustered, these buildings, it would be hard to connect them, to create those amenities. If you remember, those of you who were on the board last year, we saw Latitude, they were connecting the two buildings. I don't think you could really do that easily here because of the way that the buildings are positioned and the distance from each other, um, and that there's so many of them, that would be difficult. If you wanted to carve out them in any space in any of these buildings, you could do that, but every bit that you're doing is taking away rentable space, uh, in a building that already has a pretty small floor plate. So, the site really just because of the way the buildings are constructed, um, and the location of the parking lots too, um, they really need all the parking that they have, and to take away that parking would be a problem. So, it just doesn't lend itself well to that kind of, huh, you know, significant upgrade. And then when you look at the overall condition of the site, um, they really do need a significant amount of investment. Um, there are deferred maintenance issues, there, they know that there are, you can see it. Um, so those are, you know, that's one bucket that they need to address. But then there are also these underlying problems with the site that really doesn't fall into that category. So, there's the heat pumps that I mentioned, um, that's an enormous cost to replace those. Um, and then the buildings and, the windows and building facades, they all need to be replaced as well in all of the buildings. Um, so I think that's another over $10 million investment. And when you really combine all of that, which their architect did, and tally it up, how much it would cost. Now, we could quibble about, do they need all of those things? Do they need every little bit of investment? Um, I think that they need a lot of it, um, so it's a very high number, but we can, you know, have difference. You have to weigh that against what the actual market is going to bear, what the market can, 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 can command, excuse me. Um, and then the market study really showed us, I think, what we all are seeing and what we still see is that there is ongoing weakness here in Parsippany. There's ongoing weakness in Morris County, it hasn't recovered to the precession levels, but it's even more pronounced in Parsippany. And, so when you look at that and you look at what they can get on a per-square-foot basis, it's nowhere near the cost, the per-square-foot cost that they figured out. It's something, I think the cost was in the 500 per-square-foot range, and what they think that they could get in terms of rent is in about 170 or so, 75. So, there's a huge gap here. Um, they would never be able to recoup their costs and have any sort of reasonable return on investment. I mean, that's a huge barrier. So, we think that the conditions are such that, um, those two criteria are met. The third one, again, it's a newer criteria, and the state has not really established the standards for this. Um, so we, I looked at all of the planner, you know, planer-e's that, uh, that has been established for we planners to consider these things. Um, and they recommend basically, again, this is not one that you hang your hat on. You, you really shouldn't, you know, do a designation based on this criteria alone, but it can be used in combination with some of the others. So, um, again, the state hasn't set the standards, but, um, they have said that, um, that certain state agencies are looking at smart growth and have established their, sort of their own guidelines, and the Department of Community Affairs has included Parsippany within the smart growth planning area of the state. So, that in itself, we think, would, would satisfy this criteria. And we also looked at the smart growth principles, which this is sort of an industry best standard, um, and these have been used in other redevelopment studies in Morris County. I'm not going to read them, but they're, they're kind of all best planning practices, you know, mixed uses, more activity, more walkability, um, more sense of place, more connectivity. And not all of them are relative, you know, here are relevant, but we think some of them are. We think that, um, you know, a type of revitalization or potential development here at this property has the potential to create more of a place, has the potential to improve the walkability of this overall area, strengthen Parsippany Road as a commercial corridor. So, there, we think that there are some things here that are checked off. So we think that there are some things here that are checked off. So I felt comfortable saying that it also met criteria H, again, in combination with the other two criteria. So in conclusion, as the study indicates, we feel that it does meet the statutory criteria based on those three that I just went through to be designated as an area in need of redevelopment. And we suggest, if you're comfortable with that, that you could recommend that designation to the Township Council. Now, the report did mention that there are some other alternatives that we just wanted to bring to your attention and to the council's attention as well. And the first one, Bob, you stole my thunder a little bit on the rehab. You know, there is the other side of the LRHL, is that it could be designated as an area in need of rehabilitation, which as I said, is very similar to redevelopment, except it doesn't allow the use of pilots or some of those other financial tools. There is the potential for, and just to go back, since it qualifies for an area in need of redevelopment, it also qualifies for an area in need of rehab. Could the property be rezoned to allow for a mixture of uses? It's clearly not allowed there now. You actually don't really have a zone that fits, that kind of allows for mixed uses. You don't even have really a zone that allows for multifamily beyond the garden apartment zones that you have. However, there is a mechanism that's under state law and has also been done previously here in Parsippany. Planned area developments, planned unit developments. Here, it's been done mostly on the residential side, but the state does allow for you to do it commercially or industrially as well. And the property owner is allowed to request a rezoning. That could be something that the council considers. It would have to be a zone to be created basically for the site. And that's a whole other process. This site is included currently, as you'll hear a little bit more next, our next meeting, we're going to talk about the Affordable Housing Plan. It is included in the future unmet need, which means it's not contributing to the numbers in the current round that are the required numbers, but it is contributing to sort of that future, you know, aspirational number. So it's already in the plan, Phase One for the applicants, for the property owners' envisioned development is already kind of envisioned in that. That could potentially be expanded to cover future phases. That's, you know, that's another option for them, if they wanted to, you know, consider that for future development. And then there's always a zoning use variance, which would be if they made an application to the zoning board of appeals. We're not recommending any of these particularly. We just wanted you to know that there are options other than redevelopment. However, those aren't your charge. Your charge from the Township Council is very specific. Consider whether this is an area in need of redevelopment. It didn't say rehabilitation, it said redevelopment. So I've talked to the Township Attorney and we talked to Scott as well. You know, we don't feel like you can recommend anything other than, does it or does it not meet the criteria for redevelopment? Those are, so those are options that are provided just for your, you know, your background, your information. The council may do with them what they want. But in terms of what you do, it's yes or no on redevelopment are your, that's kind of your charge here. So I think, that's it. I'm going to leave this up. Take questions. I wish I had some water.
The union hall, that's not included in this?
It is not included.
That's a relatively new building. Or all of the rest of the property is owned by the same owner or?
One owner owns both lots. All seven buildings, nine buildings? Seven and two, yep.
So, does it include the building that medical people just moved into?
Davita, I think is the big one.
It's like, so IBW is to the left.
Yeah, let's look.
The ENT.
Yeah.
900 Landex.
Is it 900?
Yeah, 900.
900 Landex has had two medical facilities move in there recently.
Recently.
Yes.
And the building seems to be in very good shape. And these seem to be long-term type medical facilities.
I think the first floor is in good shape. There's a lot of variation when you go to the different floors of the buildings. But I would say overall, 8 and 900 are probably in better shape than the rest.
So what's confusing me, if I may? So 900 Landex, the portions of the building for those, I helped cut over those, the ribbon cutting for those two facilities, and they seem like they intended to be there for a long term. So is that building going to be one that's going to be converted?
So, I mean, the owners here tonight, if they wanted to clarify.
When we do, when we're doing this, we're doing this for all of the buildings? Or none of the buildings? Is that what we're doing?
You could do it all or a portion. When I first started out this process, I wondered if you could split off 800 and 900. I don't think that that's really advisable because they're all part of this sort of cohesive unit.
Yeah, 800 and 900 seem like they're the two better-conditioned buildings, closer to the entrance.
I thought they were just redone.
And they were under different ownership.
And then if you look at 500 Landex, which is 100 percent, no, that's the empty one.
Yeah, 300 versus 700 is full.
100 percent occupied. That looks like a winner.
Yeah, I mean, I think what really struck me when I looked at the decade of the changes is it's kind of like you take with one and you give with another, you know? It was just this sort of, they were never really completely full. At some points, they were more full than others, but there was sort of perpetual weakness. There are tenants there now, like Kings is a major tenant, seems to be doing pretty well. And some of these medical tenants, you know, that's kind of their target, is the small offices and medical in particular. I know what's envisioned in terms of their long-term revitalization plan is a phased approach. So I think, I actually know, that they would want to start at the southern part of the property where you see that significant parking area. And some of those buildings are not doing as well. 800 and 900, as I understand, would be sort of the last to be redeveloped. And I think a lot of that is based on the timing of the leases, you know, when they're up and they know that they have some of these long-term tenants. So it's not like you would flip a switch and the site is cleared and developed all at the same time. I mean, this would be, it's a huge site, multi-year development potential.
If I may, to Councilman DePiero's point, I wouldn't recommend that we create an area in need map that does not include entire lots. So I don't think you would want to carve certain buildings on a lot out and leave others in. I think it's also important to note that, you know, these are all served by the same, I'll call it roadway infrastructure and parking and the like, which I think everyone here, I think is likely to agree is in rather dilapidated shape.
Yeah. Yeah, it's the shared roadway that makes it especially hard to try to think about splitting them off.
And specifics like whether or not, you know, a building here can or should be spared, I think that that can be shaken out as the council goes through its process of developing a redevelopment plan for the parcels.
Right.
You split them out by phasing the development, Phase One, Phase Two, Phase Three.
That may be. But I think when the redevelopment plan is being developed, that would be a better, that would be the opportunity to address that issue. And you'll be able to have those discussions with the property owner at that time too, to learn a lot more specifics.
How does rezoning typically work? Do you change the zoning in an attempt to attract the developer? Does the developer command and say?
Usually it's at the request of the property owner. Yeah. Unless you were going to do something, you know, it was in the master plan and it was a vision for a larger area, now that's a different thing. But in terms of a site that you're really focused on, it's usually initiated by the owner in some fashion.
There's a way that this works in theory that I'm not going to board with, but in practice, what generally happens is a property owner asks to be designated in need of redevelopment and then is able to sit down with the township's professionals, the administration, and ultimately the governing body to come up with a plan that's agreeable to anybody, everyone. And then that plan is adopted by the council and there's a zoning overlay generally laid over the site to permit the development as agreed upon.
Right. And I neglected to mention that this did originate at a request from the property owner of this study. That was the original genesis.
Right, that actually kind of gets at my basic problem. I have a 20,000-foot question. And that is, from your point of view as a planner and Scott, from the legal side, if we declare this an area in need of redevelopment and the council should agree, this basically opens us all up to completely refiguring out what kind of way it would fit into our master plan. And that would then give a lot more flexibility for determining the uses and the purposes and all these other things. In reading your material, it even talks about subsidies and grants from the government. So I'm just trying to get what has been your experience in the whole point to doing something like this, both from the property owner's point of view and from the town's point of view?
Yeah, I mean, it's not always an easy decision, right?
No.
But this is a large site that I know the property owner has invested money in. I think that they did embark on a process when they first started, you know, when they first bought this property a few years ago. And there's still this significant vacancy. Does it mean that there'll always be a vacancy? If they put in more money, they could attract more tenants? Probably, possibly. But is it likely to happen in the current environment without any kind of change? I don't know if I see that. Will you open the door for others to ask for it? It seems like that might have been what you were getting at. Perhaps, but they would have to go through the same process. You'd have to study it.
I'm not worried about others. I'm actually thinking even more philosophically than that. And I'm trying to grasp how it fits within our master plan, how we can use it ourselves in the future. What its true effect is in terms of zoning and the benefits for both the town and the owner.
Well, I think it's not inconsistent with a lot of the things that we've been talking about in the new master plan, when we're thinking about looking at all of these office properties, because this is not the only one that we know has vacancies and needs some investment. And we've already talked about the idea of more mixed uses and thinking about new uses that maybe are appropriate and trying to offer more flexibility to people, better connectivity, better walkability. So those are all things that sort of were already talking about. And I think that this would be one tool for this particular site to perhaps get at some of that type of development. Doesn't mean that it's going to work everywhere, that we use the same tool everywhere, but it's all kind of in the same family of things that we're talking about. Yeah.
I think I kind of deduced from Mr. Carlson, there is a process as far as the governing bodies go. But how does that jive with what the process would be for the property owner? And is one quicker than, essentially, are we letting a horse out of the barn by, without knowing there's a pasture? You know what I mean?
Do you mean relative to other alternatives that they might have?
Yeah. And, because our master plan's not done, you know? And are we creating another problem for ourselves by doing this now as opposed to waiting? And I'm, so are the timetables mutual? Or are they compatible at least? Or are they incompatible or perhaps in conflict?
You know, again, I think that some of this is already being contemplated by the master plan, so a lot of it is getting into the details. You know, I think what might be an outcome of the master plan is sort of a general strategy about your office campuses. Doesn't mean that you do it here or here the same way. In some cases, it might be, you know, rezoning or tweak the existing zoning. Here, you have a property owner who clearly wants this path. Is it any quicker? I don't know. The master plan, we think, will be adopted this fall. This process, when you send it to the governing body, they don't have to act on it right away. It's, the timetable is really in their court. You know, I'm not a mind reader, I'm sorry, I'm not a fortune teller. I don't know what they're going to do. So it may or may not be quicker than the master plan. If you were looking into rezoning, I'm not sure that would be a very quick process because you'd actually have to create the zone itself and that's a whole other process. So there's no sort of overnight option for them. This is one path that has a whole process outlined.
Claring an area in need of redevelopment doesn't pigeonhole it.
No. In fact, you have properties here in town that have been designated as redevelopment areas, but perhaps the plan was never actually done and so nothing happened for one reason or another. Or a plan was done and then it was not actually implemented.
Just a, just a, an area in need of rehab that was done is the dentist building the office on Parsippany Road. Next to the Board of Ed building there.
Oh, Coggiello.
Coggiello, yes.
They ran into ADA problems.
Yeah, if the council was interested in going down that path, I believe, Scott, correct me if I'm wrong, they'd have to re-refer it to you for that purpose. And then you'd have to do a study for rehab. Because of the way they made the original referral, they didn't leave you an option. They only gave you redevelopment.
To allay fear that a horse is going to run out of the barn here, we, this step essentially is the first step that gives the council the tools it needs on the table to, and the administration, I should say, to work with the property owner to come up with a plan that's agreeable to all of them.
That's what I wanted. That's what I wanted.
Thank you, Scott.
Was really what I was asking.
Then they have to be, the zoning overlay has to happen by the council and then they've got to come back here for site plans still.
And all of that involves multiple public hearings as well.
Right.
Does the, at the time when the governing body and administration, everybody does the overlay, is that like an actual ordinance that will come?
Yes.
Yes.
That'll be the actual, and that'll say the setbacks and everything. And then once that's created, does that come back to us again? Or?
Then they'd come in for site plan.
Then once the new zoning is put into place, they would file an application for site plan approval here.
Okay. So that ordinance wouldn't be passed by them to us and that, like some zoning ordinances do?
Oh, no, the ordinance too would come back.
They have to refer to you, yeah.
Yeah, would come back.
Think about Stanbury, that you just did.
I mean, there's at least half a dozen, if not more, steps that involve public hearings before anything is finalized.
When Stanbury just came back to you, it was to amend the redevelopment plan and now that's been amended. So that's the ordinance basically that stands for that property. And their next step, I believe they're coming in August or September, is site plan. But it'll all be under that redevelopment plan that has been created. So a similar process could happen here.
But if we remember, there's not a lot we can do about Stanbury because of the negotiations for the pilot and all those things.
Right, but that's, that's right, but that's the limited role of the board, you know? It's the council and the administration that ultimately have the ability to choose how the property is to be used and what size the buildings, which should be, it's simply not this board's purview.
Yep.
Or a review board.
Any other questions? Do you guys want to say anything? Should we open the public hearing? Is it open?
Open to the public if you, yeah, the board seems like it's made comments already.
Always make more.
I'll open to members of the public if anyone has any questions or comments at this point.
Oh, here, I'm going to put it back.
If you remember, Mr. O'Neill, we traditionally don't go past 10 o'clock.
I'm going to be very brief. My comments.
I was talking to somebody.
That was because we're already past. It's okay.
I'm going to be extra brief.
You can start on my new clock now. There's Joseph O'Neill, care of, follow O'Neill, Rogirio for the property owner that's under consideration here this evening. There's a couple of things that I want to address, but the main thing that I want to address is something that hasn't really been brought out of the whole redevelopment law, which is the redevelopment process gives the municipality quite a few tools that are not available in the other things that are under consideration. And the real thing that gets into redevelopment, when you do redevelopment, you're setting up overlay ordinances, yes, that's all true. But there's also a mechanism for enforcement of redevelopment that's utilized by very many municipalities to really define the type of project that you're going to have in a more granular level than you do with a zoning ordinance or something else like that. We're looking for redevelopment because we're very confident that eventually what's going to be on this project, this property, is going to be a very high-end product, very amenitized product, something that Parsippany's going to be very proud of. So extra conditions regarding finishes, amenities, things like that, which you can't really designate through your zoning changes and other changes. The redevelopment agency that's created as part of redevelopment can control that and can control the actual development of the site from the municipal point of view. So you get a much, much more control over a project that's going through redevelopment than you would through some of the other processes that were outlined here today. I know that there was a question about 800 and 900. A lot of people may be familiar with these buildings, that they were recently redone. And that is true. The client, when they took over the property, went all out trying to get those properties up to snuff to attract tenants. What has happened, those medical use tenants you see that are in there now, are tenants taken from other Parsippany properties that have moved across town into these buildings. And even with all that, even with all the investment that's in that property right now, over half unoccupied. Still not working at all. Ms. Favate talked a little bit about the investment numbers that are involved for a site like this. We did do a study, calculated, we did come up with a number regarding bringing this property up to snuff to compete in what is already an oversaturated market. You may have heard that Morris County has the highest vacancy rate in offices in New Jersey, Parsippany has the highest vacancy rate in Morris County, and Parsippany Road has the highest vacancy rate in Parsippany for office vacancies. It is the worst of the worst of the worst on that zone. So we did a calculation, what it would cost to bring this property up to snuff, $502 a square foot, $502 a square foot. Across the street in Lanidex West, a redone property with a tenant on a 15-year lease, recently sold for $75 a square foot. So that tells you right there that it's just not going to work. Expecting at some point, this property is going to come back where it's going to be worth that type of money in the short term, even a short horizon that we're talking about here now. And eventually, if we get through the whole redevelopment process, we're talking about a process that's going to take us through 2035, you're just not going to realize that. No one's going to pay any extra money over that number to improve these buildings. They already tried it at eight hundred, nine hundred. They look great, and it's not working at all. It's just not working at all. So that's one of the reasons why we're asking for this redevelopment. But the redevelopment, again, a lot of tools to the township that you don't normally have. There's a whole toolbox that you can utilize. We're not talking about that right now, we're talking about the designation. This property is just pavement of empty buildings and everything else. It's just not working at all. But when we eventually, hopefully, come back to you with that redevelopment plan, you're going to have a whole toolbox that you can use to control. I encourage you to look at what other towns have done. And Ms. Favate is very familiar with what these other towns have done, will advise you of all the things that you can do, as is Mr. Carlson, not to take anything away from you. But a lot of tools at your disposal. Mr. Milelli, who's one of the principals of the property owner, can answer any additional questions that you may have.
Anyone have any questions?
Thank you for your time this evening.
I think he summed it up very well, and that is a point that was overlooked, is that the municipality does gain some control over architectural details and the like that it would otherwise not have under conventional zoning.
Yeah, that is true, and it was a good point. You can get into really, really detailed areas, like exactly how many of the parking spaces have to be designed for charging vehicles. You know, not only how much open space you have to have, but what kind of open space does it have to be? Paving treatments, finishes, architectural design, all of those things, you can really get at with a redevelopment plan. So, you know, people think of the, you know, the pilot is the big word that people think of with redevelopment, but it kind of goes really far beyond that. That is one aspect that the township may or may not choose, but they have all these other tools available to them. Any other questions?
Just out of curiosity, if I may. Five hundred Lanidex is 100% occupied. What's the secret there?
You want to answer?
It's seven hundred, it's 100% occupied?
Seven hundred, yeah.
Yeah, and it actually is...
Sorry, I'm going to swear. I'm sorry.
Seven hundred. That just stands out like a soft thumb.
Please raise your right hand, please.
Sure.
This person has the money, you're about to give us the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Yes.
State your name for the record, please.
Joseph Milelli.
Okay. For the councilman's question, if you will.
Okay, that's building seven hundred, is 100% occupied.
Right.
Which 75% of that building is King's, King's supermarkets, their corporate office. They've been there since 1999. They're there for about another five years, and there's a strong possibility that they won't be there in five years. There's another tenant that actually just left Interstate, Interstate Drywall, which was about 8,000 feet, Susan, they just left right after your last walkthrough. They vacated, they moved to Secaucus to be in more of an industrial flex-type building to be closer to New York City where a majority of their business is. It's actually not 100% occupied currently at this time. The other tenant is Rockwell Automation, they've been there for some time. They do a variety of automated technology, and my understanding is they have a lot of heavy equipment there that's hard to move. So that's why they've been there, and they haven't left yet. But the building is in really bad shape. It would be very difficult to bring it up to today's standard without getting the proper rent to do so.
Okay, thank you.
A simple question.
Yes.
How come over the years, investment wasn't made to keep the property up to date?
So we purchased eight hundred and nine hundred Lanidex in November 2015 via an auction, and these properties were well occupied up until about 2008, 2009. But after the recession and office trends have changed significantly throughout the country, and especially throughout the state of New Jersey with so much suburban office park, that we've never been able to get them back up to that stabilized occupancy of north of 85%. And we've put significant money into eight and nine hundred four years ago, and it just hasn't panned out. Our investment plan did not work. We were able to obtain two medical tenants on a long-term deal, which were kind of lost leaders because they've cost a lot of money upfront, so we won't be seeing much return for many, many years on those two buildings. In terms of the other side of the park, 100 through 700, we just purchased that in April 2018. And these buildings have gone through a variety of ownerships who've all tried to put money in and bring them up to par and restabilize them, back to where, you know, they were in their former, in their glory days, which was the 70s and the 80s, but they haven't been able to do so. And the real issue is really kind of just to echo what Mr. O'Neill said here, is that you have about, in Morris County, you have about 40,000 square feet of office per square mile. In Parsippany, you have about 540,000 square feet of office per square mile. So frankly, there's just way too much of it. And even if we invested and put gyms and cafes in every single building, which, you know, wouldn't be feasible, we still wouldn't be able to get back up to that 80% occupancy for a very long time, if at any time in the near future.
Now, there was a statistic in the market study that I stood out of, and I remember, and it was that the current office levels here in town would take 15 years, I think, to absorb based on the current market. And that's without a recession happening, which, who knows, might happen in the next five years. So there's a huge amount of office space. I mean, I think we all have heard that over and over again, but that's pretty stark when you look at those figures.
There's one other thing I forgot to mention, and I know it's getting late, but there is a portion of this you'll be hearing that's part of the Affordable Housing Plan for the unmet need. The agreement with that Affordable Housing Plan allows for modification should you designate the area for redevelopment. So all those tools that I talked about for redevelopment, unlike the other affordable housing options you may have, come into this. So you get that whole toolbox calling out the specifics of what it is the town wants to have there. It all comes back, and that can be modified through this redevelopment process.
Susan, just clarification here. Let's say that the board sends the governing body a recommendation that we do declare this an area in need of redevelopment. They say, okay?
They declare, you make the recommendation that it meets the statutory criteria, and you recommend that they declare.
Who actually develops the plan?
They do.
Well, then what happens...
But they involve you in that process as well.
Then what happens is the, I hate to give a lengthy explanation at this hour, but...
Well, then give a short one.
The better way to understand this is that generally, in a lot of redevelopment, the power of eminent domain is the big power the township gets. That's not happening here. But what often happens is there'll be condemnation of the property. Let's say it's a belated, dilapidated, you know, area. It's condemned, and then essentially, the municipality will shop for a redeveloper, and various redeveloper candidates will put forth proposals, and the township picks the one it likes the most. In cases like this, where you've got a property owner who tends to remain the property owner, you know who the designated redeveloper is going to be. So presumably, then, one of the next steps that will be taken is that the property owner will be designated the redeveloper, and then in turn, the designated redeveloper will work with the town, with the administration and the council to come up with a plan for the area.
And that designation comes from the council, not from us?
That's correct.
We just did this in Chatham, actually. We just did two redevelopment areas. And one was the typical way where it was a larger area, and some of it was public, some of it was private, and we chose, we did a redevelopment, we designated it, did a redevelopment plan, and then they're designated developer. The other one was, I think, more similar to this one in that the property owner already owned property, and actually, we, the planning board, approved an apartment building, and then they bought more property, had a much larger area, then wanted to go through the redevelopment process. So we already knew who we were working with, we did a redevelopment plan with our planners, but I think they involved them, so they knew what the developer wanted to do and put something together that the borough felt comfortable with, and now they're coming back for site plan now that all that's been done. So it can be a very straightforward process when it works like that. When you're dealing with, you know, soliciting developers, that can be a more complicated process because you have to prepare RFPs and figure out who you want, and all of that comes into play. But here, you already know who you're dealing with, basically.
So I think what we're charged with is whether or not A, D, and H are in alignment with, you know, whether or not this is, you know, aligned with those requirements.
Correct.
And with that said, what's relevant to me is we don't have a property owner who has been ignoring their property. They made a good faith investment to try and get eight and nine hundred up and running. They did it in small scale potentially by only doing the two buildings, which is a reasonable business decision. And they didn't see the returns come from that, so they need something more. And it seems to me that's what we need to do at this point.
I think, if there's no further discussion, what you're going to need is a motion to find that the proposed area in need satisfies the statutory criteria to be designated as such.
Let's find out if there are any more comments before we move to the motion.
I have a question first.
Okay.
Since I'm on the council, and you're going to be sending this recommendation to me, should I be voting or abstaining?
You can vote.
As a planning board member, I can still vote and have no comment.
Vote on soil moving permits.
No problem with that, do you, Mr. O'Neill?
No, I agree with that completely, Mr. Carlson. You're a member of the planning board, a councilman. You vote on soil moving permits, so I mean, this is just a big one.
This is a big one, yeah.
Big soil moving permit.
All right, if there are no further comments, then I will entertain a motion on what to do with this toward the governing body.
I would be happy to make a motion that we find this area in need of redevelopment and recommend to the council, well, recommend to the council that they find that this be an area in need of redevelopment. Is that, what's the proper phrasing in this?
Just say what Scott said.
Yeah.
Seconded, Von Aiken.
Von Aiken seconds. Please call a roll.
Mr. Perrow.
Yes.
Councilman DePiero.
Yes.
Mr. Dinsmore.
Yes.
Mr. Frigiri.
Yes.
Ms. Hernandez.
Yes.
Mr. Mendel.
Yes.
Mr. Mealy.
Yes.
Mr. Patel. Ms. Veely.
Yes.
Mr. Von Aiken.
Yes.
Chairman Keller.
Yes.
Thank you, everyone. Have a nice evening.
Thank you.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
I want to stay here.
Remember, the first meeting for August has been canceled?
Yes.